And I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Public Education Commission. It is Friday, January 17th, and it is 9:06 a.m. Secretary Beck, take your role, please.
Chair Gibson.
Here.
Vice Chair Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ingham.
Here.
Commissioner Kloschusilich.
Here.
Commissioner Bower.
Present.
Commissioner Manus.
Here.
Commissioner Ovinshein. He's here. Commissioner Taylor. Here. Commissioner Burt. Secretary Beck. Here. All 10 are here. We have a quorum.
We do. We do. So we have to take role. Yeah, I know. You were on. Because. Yeah. Originally Sharon was supposed to be here. That's okay. I know. So I'm going to ask folks to please stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Salute to the New Mexico Flag.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God. Free and justice for all.
Salute the flag of the state of Mexico. To be assembled. For friendship among in a.
And if someone has the mission and vision up. I'm not on the drive yet. It's my. I did not know my mouth was.
The vision for the Public Education Commission is that all students and families residing in New Mexico, regardless of background or circumstance, will experience equitable access to a diverse array of innovative, high-quality public schools, where students will learn, thrive, and realize their full potential. The Public Education Commission's mission is to authorize and support public charter schools for innovative, equitable, choice-driven education, where all New Mexico students learn and thrive. And our five values are transparency, consistency, respect, student-centered excellence, and equity and inclusion. Thank you. I'll. Wait.
Yeah.
There's one. This red, let's see. Rio Grande Academy of Fine Arts, under item 14, is listed twice. And Red River Valley Charter School was left off, but we're accepting their annual report, so we'll also do a notice. This is a typo.
We'll go ahead and approve your agenda with those many changes. Second.
A motion by Commissioner Carrillo and a second by Commissioner Beck. All, please.
Commissioner Burt.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Ovinshein.
Yes.
Commissioner Manus.
Yes.
Commissioner Bower.
Yes.
Commissioner Kloschusilich. Commissioner Ingham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Carrillo.
Yes.
Chair Gibson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kloschusilich. Secretary Beck, yes, there are nine votes for, zero votes against. The motion passes.
Thank you. We are on to item number three, which is public comment.
We have three people on Zoom signed up for public comment. Our first is Michelle Trujillo. Please spell your first and last name. Try to keep your comments to two minutes, and I will have a timer going.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, and I'll start the timer after you spell your name.
Okay, good morning. My name's Michelle Trujillo. Good morning. It's been a bit since I came to one of the meetings and spoke. My son attended Alma Arte. While he was there, he was bullied by administration. His needs, being a special education student, were overlooked. Even after months of asking to test him, they never did, which caused him to completely fail. He was mistreated with so many different things that he wasn't the only student. Even on a corrective action plan, the school was still let off easy. My husband, my husband and myself privately had him tested, and those results were used for his IEP. Right now, he's attending New America, and since day one, they've been amazing. My son has passed classes that he couldn't pass at Alma Arte because he didn't have the support. Now he's outgoing. He talks way more. He's made friends. He's excited to go to school. He's a completely different child from when he attended Alma. Not only did Alma Arte administration fail my son, but so did the governing board. And I'm sorry to say, so did the commissioner sitting here today. Parents spoke up, told you the problems. They still do to this day. And yet you failed to do anything. The administration and governing board should have been replaced a long time ago. I feel so blessed and so happy that my son does not attend that school anymore, yet my heart still breaks for the parents and the students that do. My son's doing amazing because I advocated for him, because we support him, and now we're part of an amazing school that supports him. We have never heard one parent, a parent, not a colleague, not a teacher, defend the administration or the governing board at Alma Arte. Right there, that says it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jana Holguin.
Good morning. My name is Jana Holguin, last name H-O-L-G-U-I-N. Good morning, members of the PEC, PED, and CSD. It was stated at a previous PEC meeting that its members are believers in checks and balances. However, it's glaringly evident that no such system exists at Alma. Despite the contract's mandate for the governing body to adhere to rules and laws regarding conflicts of interest, Alma operates with blatant nepotism and cronyism, such as a husband and wife both serving on the board. These conflicts are not only unethical, but also a direct violation of the charter and governing policies. Alma continues to violate its own bylaws, its charter with the PEC and OMA, among others. When these violations are pointed out, complete with evidence, Alma denies accountability. Despite numerous efforts to bring these challenges to light, Alma's misconduct persists unchecked as no governing authority, including the PEC, has enforced the rules and statutes in place to ensure compliance. At the October PEC meeting, Alma's preliminary annual report showed unsatisfactory performance with 11 out of 26 indicators in the red. Despite this, Alma was not issued a notice of concern, unlike the other two schools with only three indicators in the red each. This non-issuance of a notice of concern violates the very rules and statutes the PEC is tasked to uphold as the authorizing and compliance body. The PEC rule states that if a school is not rated as satisfactory or exemplary in performance, a notice of concern must be issued. By failing to document Alma's unsatisfactory performance, the PEC projects a false narrative that the school is performing adequately, which could be further from the truth. Repeated unsatisfactory performance must result in documented consequences. As per PEC rules, uncorrected unsatisfactory performance is defined as the failure to correct performance deficiencies over a two- or more-year consecutive annual reports during the charter term. The PEC must enforce this standard with Alma, which has clearly failed to meet the mark repeatedly. The charter requires Alma to notify the PEC chair and department within 15 days of any written complaint. Was the PEC notified of my complaint filed October 13th? The response I received from Alma was riddled with lies and inaccuracies, claiming compliance despite clear evidence to the contrary. The charter also mandates background checks for employees, volunteers, contractors, and their employees. Has Alma complied with this requirement for the students under contract through the Innovation Zone Grant or for the radio DJs working with the students? If not, this presents a serious safety legal violation that cannot be ignored. Alma remains out of compliance with the state's webcasting mandate. Meetings are plagued by persistent video and audio issues. Webcasts lack submission options for public comments, and recordings and minutes are not posted within the required timeframe. For instance, the livestream listed for October 21st is really the meeting from September 16th. The webcast for November has yet to be posted despite my repeated request for access. This lack of transparency directly violates the mandate and obstructs public oversight. It has been said the PEC is an authorizing and compliance body. Here again, I'm presenting numerous examples of Alma's repeated and consistent noncompliance with its charter, as well as state and federal laws that indicate a systemic failure of oversight. I would like to know how you all intend to address Alma's ongoing noncompliance. Ignoring these issues not only undermines the public trust in this institution, but also jeopardizes the students and families who depend on the PEC to enforce its own standards. Thank you.
You, and finally, we have Janet Van Koblijn.
My name is Janet Van Koblijn. My last name is two words, V-A-N, space, C-O-B-L-I-J-N. Good morning, everyone. Again, I would much rather be singing the praises, particularly of New America. I can only second Michelle's comments on how fantastic they have been, not only on their own, but in accommodating Alma students or former Alma students. But alas, we're still going over the same thing that we've been going over for, at least with the Public Education Commission and CSD, now for well over a year, year and a half, two years. I'm calling in from overseas again, because I cannot be there in person. When there's a GC meeting in two weeks at Alma, I will not be able to do anything except maybe gain access because the head administrator controls who can access, and if he doesn't like who it says it is, he won't let them in, which is interesting, to say the least. Not only that, it doesn't make it very much of an open meeting, but the audio and video quality, because it is not being professionally done, I don't know where the $10,000 that they allotted for that went, is so poor. It's only through the efforts of Mrs. Holguin that we actually can attend virtually the meetings. There's no provision for us making public comment from via Zoom, as is this. And they recently changed the starting time so as to make it even more difficult for people to attend in person. But what I know is that they continue to misrepresent the number of students they have, that, and the students are spending a lot of time in the cafeteria again. They misrepresent who is actually teaching at the school on their website. The website is fairly useless. And time and time again, it's as if, how gullible is particularly CSD or PEC or the General Counsel? They all just take everything, everything seems to be taken at face value when it comes from the administration. When it's it's blatantly obvious that nothing has been corrected. Thank you for your time. Again.
Thank you, Janet. That concludes public comment.
We're done? Okay, thanks. We're now on to number four, which is school highlights and spotlights. Commissioner Beck.
Thank you. I attended the Albuquerque School of Excellence Winter Cheers Festival on Saturday, and it was awesome. What it is, is it's a celebration of their diversity and the cultures within this, from the school. So we were able to hear a a wonderful, or see a wonderful African dance routine for about, I want to say 10, 12 relatives of two of the students. There was a Japanese, very loud drum performance, which was quite interesting. Some songs and some poetry. And it was really, really wonderful. So I want to say hats off to Mr. Aliq and his group. And also, I want to say a shout out to Gloria Lama, who's the, she's the eighth grade teacher who organizes all this stuff. And it's really wonderful. So it was fun. My wife and I had a good time. Thank you.
Thanks. I have two things. First, Ask Academy, which they just came, they talked to us about their robotics program. They went yesterday, they were in Dallas, Texas, at a national robotics competition and got into the top 10 in the nation. They got ninth place in the entire country. So big shout out to Ask Academy. Their sponsors, teachers who lead students, but those students who really do, I mean, it's very project-based, those students are doing the work. So congratulations to Ask Academy Robotics Team for representing New Mexico in such a great way. As well, I also have, the Albuquerque Business First every year puts out a Woman of Influence Award. And this year, Jade Rivera from Albuquerque Collegiate received the Albuquerque, she's one of the recipients of the Albuquerque Business First 2025 Women's of Influence Award. So yeah, congratulations to Jade for being recognized for the work she's doing, not at her school, but in the community at large. So congratulations to her as well.
So I want to say a big congratulations and big shout out to Margarita Porter, who was the PCS and M's Charter Leader of the Year. She's the leader of New America's Last Crusis, and she is a force to be reckoned with. And I hear, you know, I get feedback from staff, from her and folks saying, yeah, I mean, she has like such high standards, but she has such a great relationship with her staff. They just want to do what makes her look good. Because they just, and she supports that school, and she has, you know. They have a tiny tots program that started out literally in a closet because she was that committed to making sure that those students could get to school and be served. And it has expanded, and I don't know how. She's like a budget wizard. Because what she does with the folks that are unfunded, you know, because she's got the, it's a recovery school by and large. So she's got a lot of aged out that they have committed to continue to serve. And she gets, you know, she must be on the computer all the time looking for funding. Because it's like, I got grants for the, you know, for the little kids, and it's, and they've been able to purchase, they're in lease purchase, and they're building now. So I'm hoping that NMFA program might be able to help them. So it's, you know, I just want to say she does just an incredible job. And it's all too often, those that are doing that great job, we just kind of, because we're focused on the issues. And we don't get to say, thank you, how much I appreciate you. So I just want to make sure, and I've already told her that, so thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So we are on to item number five, which is our introduction of our new member. We want to say welcome to Sam and offer you an opportunity if you want to tell folks a little bit about yourself, or, you know.
Sure. So I was thinking yesterday what a kind of surreal experience it's been for me, coming back to this community. I was on the other side of this table for a long time when I became the, I think, the first director of state charter schools in PED. I have worked in public education for over 30 years, two-time retired, I don't know if that means anything. But a little bit of trivia, so to tell you how full circle this is, I was the principal at Harrison Middle School in Albuquerque Public Schools back in the day. And we were one of the four original conversion charter schools in New Mexico. I worked with, this name will maybe remind some people, Dr. Michael Kaplan, at the time, was the director of charter schools. And we were the first school ever to rescind our charter, which was, it was just this crazy experience. No one had ever done it before. I, the reason I decided to rescind the charter was because I felt like we could do everything that we needed to do with strong leadership and with teaching, and we didn't need another form of oversight. So that was kind of my introduction to charter schools and the charter community. Carrillo was the person who interviewed me for the job as charter school director back in the day. I have since been a director of Cottonwood Classical Preparatory School after I left here. This is something for the historian to check, but I may still have the longest tenure of any charter school director in the history of that position. Because we have two of them sitting right next to me, right? Anyway. But so I was here when we started the state charter authorization process. Julia Barnes and I worked together when she was helping the Mexico School of the Arts get started. So it's just a really kind of surreal, full circle moment for me, and I just appreciate being here and hope that I can add some value to the commission. So thank you all for having me.
Sam was already.
And all those people voted for me, of course.
Yeah. Sam was already a legend when I came on toward the commission. So welcome, and your voice was very important to us when we were working on the performance framework. So we appreciate that, and we have high expectations. So thank you very much. We are on to the second part of item number four, which is the election of officers. And I am going to open it up as for chair, and I am going to nominate Rebecca Burt for chair.
You have to accept and have a second.
It has to be a second, and you have to accept in that order.
I will second that. Sorry.
So nomination and a second by Commissioner Ingham? Okay. Nominations are closed. Oh. So Julia has to, you have to text Julia your vote. So she will.
I got it.
I said, when I was nominated, I said, I was nominated for vice chair. And I said, no.
Well, no.
Oh, I got you.
Reopen nomination.
We'd have to reopen. Yeah.
Go in the back room with a couple cigars, get a backroom deal going.
Yes, yeah. Well, then you're assuming that that person's not even voting for themselves? Yeah. You don't need any, you only need one vote.
Two more to text me, please.
Gotcha, yeah, gotcha, yeah, you're right. We'd have to reopen.
With responses both in Spanish and English, you have been elected chair.
So I will now open up nominations for vice chair.
I would like to nominate Ms. Patty Gibson for vice chair.
Second.
I accept.
Well, we have.
You have to text. The word is not made. I do fur all the time instead of four, you know, and fur. Sounds like I've got a, you know, I'm from West, by God, Virginia.
With responses both in French and English.
You are vice chair.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to run a poll on what the next language is going to be. So I'm now going to open up nominations for, I was going to say treasurer, secretary.
I'd like to nominate Steve Carrillo as secretary. I graciously accept. Thank you.
Okay, I'm closing votes first, secretary. I don't know why I want to say treasurer.
Will we need a treasurer if we're being called?
No. There'd have to be. Oh, sorry. I'm abstaining. I even wrote treasurer. I can't get that out of my.
I texted the wrong person. I'm sorry. Hold on one second.
Did you text yourself?
No. Somebody's going to say, why did he text me this?
She texted me, yeah.
I got a.
Okay, are we good?
We're good.
And in an attempt at German and Spanish, Steve is secretary.
Thank you.
It'll be hard to live up to Tim.
Madam Chair, I just want to share just a few things. First and foremost, thank you for your, all your efforts in, in being our chair again for this last year and all the work that you've supported us and, and doing in good ways, in a way that our commission is, I've been talking to a lot of different folks here, the commission is so, like, I don't even, I don't want to say functional, because that seems like that's, it hasn't been functional in the past. We, and I try not to be judgmental, but it's been, it's been really, it's been really good to see how we interact and engage. And that comes from leadership, intentional leadership, and I just want to thank you for that. I want to thank Steve for being the vice chair this past year. I know the extraordinary, I mean, I don't know personally, but like, extraordinary work that we've put on to the vice chair role, which I think it's, it's a lot. And I know that Chair Gibson, you're well-equipped to lead that and, and direct us to support the heavy lifting that's going to happen with our schools. And Steve, thank you for doing that and I'm glad you're going to be the secretary. And Commissioner Beck, thank you for your service, jumping in, year two of your charter experience as a human, to, to jump into this, I think it's, it's really great. And so I wanted to share that all with you all. And also, just because of the world in which we live in right now, I think that this is how normal is. And it feels extraordinarily abnormal that this is how we engage with one another. But this is normal. And I feel, I feel like, I know I've, I've shared a lot about how wonderful it is to have five Dems and five Rs on this deist. And it's, and it's beautiful to see how we can transition in leadership without any bloodletting, but with love and kindness. And I feel like, I, I just, I just think it's important for us to name that and call that out in a world where this is not normal anymore. And the only way we can get back to normal is if we start to like, see like, this is what it is, and this is the full embrace of how politics ought to be done on our legal city spot that we care about in New Mexico. And so I just applaud you all and all the work that we do together and that we continue to make this the normal of, of American politics.
I want to say thanks to Tim. His voice has been really important. And I really look forward to moving forward. You're right, I, you know, I've always really appreciated and counted on, on Becca's voice. So it's really important to be there. So I, I really, I think this is, I mean, we are on a good path. I tell folks all the time that work in politics, you need to watch one of our meetings and then I want you to tell me who's an R and who's a D. Said you're not going to be able to, to do it. And we work hard at that. And maybe it's a good lesson for everyone else. We have differences. And to me, differences are what get us to a better place. So, and we respect the differences and we respect the votes that we take at the end of the day and support whatever the group has decided. And that's, you know, that's what good governance is. So we are, we are in a far better place than when, you know, there wasn't, actually when I came on, there wasn't a director. So they had a manager that really didn't have that power. Matt Paul was the acting director, but he was doing policy for PED, so he just didn't have, so the manager was running the show and she really didn't have the authority to do that. So it was, and honestly, there might have been three people on staff. I mean, that's the, you know, we have more schools, but not that many more. So we've, it's been a long, hard fight to get the, to where we are today. And there was some bloodletting. There was, but thank you, thank you, everyone.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, Mike and I were actually, speaking of bloodletting, looking forward to a boxing match. We thought we were going to have a boxing match here, but unfortunately that didn't turn out. But I want to thank Patty.
She told us. Yeah. This is Sharon, I, I want to, you know. Good morning, everybody. I want, this is Sharon, I want to ditto everything that has been said, but I want to add that what really assisted me was the confidence that I have and had in all three of you. And listening to the conversation when we go into the weeds has really been educational for me. I especially appreciate that factor from you all. And I also appreciate the fact that you just instilled so much representation of our charter by the knowledge and experience that you all have exhibited. And Tim, I want to congratulate you and tell you you did an excellent job as a freshman, as a newbie on our commission, so great job. And I look forward to the next round. And I know I'll learn even more. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to finish up saying, I appreciate working with Patty and Steve and Julia on the EC. I learned a ton on there. It educated me a lot in terms of what goes on here. So these guys are going to be awesome, all three of them. And, you know, I, I know that they're going to be direct and to the point. And it should be a, a great year ahead.
You are now on to item number six, which is discussion of possible action to approve the Open Meetings Act resolution for 2025. A copy of it is in your meeting materials, so I just need a motion to accept it.
Motion to approve, or to accept the open meetings?
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Correio and a second by Commissioner Gibson. Yes.
For all those charters that actually might be watching this morning, the Open Meetings Act is really important. And I've been in different board meetings around the state and listened to them where it's almost treated in a lackadaisical fashion. And we've heard people in public forum before and everything else. And I just want boards to please, please take this so seriously. Especially the public comment portion, doing things in order, not going into executive session when you're not supposed to. We are vigilant about our adherence to the act. And so I would just, I really want our, our schools and our boards to, to be so as well.
Thank you. Roll, please.
Commissioner Ringham?
Yes.
Mr. Klosasilic? Mr. Klosasilic? Mr. Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus? Commissioner Manus? Yoohoo. Mr. Odenchain? Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Vice Chair Correio?
Yes.
Chair Gibson? Commissioner Littleish?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Secretary Beck, yes, there are 10 votes for, zero votes against, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. We are on to item number seven, which is the introduction of a new head administrator for Tierra Adentro. So I know your folks are here. You can come up with her if you want. You have.
There we go.
So just to remind you, we started last thing.
Okay. I am Genevieve Lopez, L-O-P-E-Z.
She's actually not writing it, we have a transcriber that's on.
Madam Commissioner, members of the PEC, thank you very much for having me here today. When I received notice that I was going to be introduced today, I was very honored. The acknowledgement and the support really means a lot in this next step. I know that I have very big shoes to fill. And I am grateful that I have Veronica's support and guidance to help me with this transition, because I know there's going to be a learning curve, but I feel really confident moving forward. Tannum's been my home for 12 years. And I know that I have the support from our board and our staff and our community, so I really feel like this is going to be a really good step in the future. And I'm excited to work with all of you guys and to see how we can help our kids move
So welcome.
Thank you.
I mean, this is just, and you expressed it exactly, because you've got a strong administration already, you've got a board that functions so well and that community. I'm really anxious to see where you are in a year.
Me too.
So, welcome.
Thank you.
And good luck. I'm sure they're not letting you go too far away. Commissioner Brower?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Congratulations, it's great to have you there and it's, it's awesome that the, your, you know, your leadership experience is continuing at Tierra Adentro. And you're bringing in all that institutional knowledge, wisdom into a new role. Congratulations. And Ms. Torres, congratulations for you as well. I know, I know that Commissioner Odenchain said he retired a couple times. I imagine that you probably are going to stay busy in, in some things at some point, maybe after some, some breaks. So hopefully that includes some work with our schools since you have such a great skillset and wisdom to share in that respect. So congratulations on your next steps too.
Commissioner Correio?
Ms. Lopez, thank you very much for taking on the role and then for all the work you've done. The, my first introduction to, to Adentro is, was when you came for renewal and your kids were just inspirational and joyful and fun. And it was just so great to have them here, the building shook. I mean, with like excitement when you were here and everyone was displaying to us just their skills and their passion. And, but also, that part's great, but the learning part's great too. So I'm just really grateful that you're able to combine both and have such success with your kids. I love that, the continuity is so important in terms of changing over to, you're assuming the head administrator role. I'm very glad that that's the, the course that you're on. And I'm just looking forward to great things over these next five years and beyond.
Thank you.
Commissioner? You don't mind?
Absolutely.
So congratulations. This is another one of those full circle moments for me. I think this might happen quite a bit. But Tannum was up when I was the director, when you first put your application in. And I remember having multiple conversations and enjoying just the whole idea and the concept of the school. So congratulations for that. I have to let you know that Ms. Torres was my daughter's teacher at Public Academy for Performing Arts. So that's another kind of full circle thing for me. So congratulations, good luck, and we wish you all the best.
I want to say thanks for the artwork that we have here. It's, it's, it's always nice to be able to showcase students' work, so thank you for that. And you should see the new building they're in. Have you? It's, yeah. So thank you. Appreciate it. Have a.
Thanks for coming up.
And thanks for coming up, we really do appreciate being able to see folks. We are on to item number eight, which is the consent agenda. Do any commissioners have something they want pulled off? If not, I will move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, a second by Commissioner Correio.
Vice Chair Correio?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Odenchain?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Klosasilic?
Yes.
Commissioner Ringham?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are 10 votes for, zero votes against, the motion passes.
Item number nine is for anything that would have been pulled off the consent agenda. Reme Denay is a school that has fallen below five. They're not in number nine because they're an agenda item on 11. So that's where that discussion will be. But we don't have any others. So we'll move on to item number 10, which is update by CSD on the, the middle of plans and discussion of possible action to complete the conditions. So we had three of the applicants that had conditions, so we're just looking to close these out if, and I, and I think we, well, we can do two, I don't know whether we have, we don't, I don't think we have a confirmation from. No, we're just, this is just the condition.
So I'm taking this. You have our synopsis of the schools and their, and the two plans that we have in, in your drive, I can, there's screen. As of Tuesday, I believe, Equip Academy is still working, they have multiple options, but nothing has been confirmed at this time. Then we have Sacramento School of Engineering and Science. Their condition was to provide you guys with a possible plan, a plan for possible transportation. They have submitted a comprehensive plan on how they would do that. And that is in your drive. And if you have any questions, we do have the board chair here present. And then Sun Mountain Community School had a condition to provide a plan for possible transportation and a plan for outreach. And they have provided that, very comprehensive, is also in there.
Okay. Thank you. And hopefully by next month, we can close out Equip if they sign the lease. That's, you know, that's the only thing they're paying that off at this point in time. They're, they're close, but they just haven't signed up the dotted line. It's really hard. Yeah, it's, it's, you know, this is, as anyone that's open to school, this is the hardest. To me, this is the hardest of the implementation year, which is, sometimes our people have said, you know what? I think the, it should be a year and a half or a two-year cycle, only because it's so hard to get a facility that, that consumes so much time that everything else, so that, you know, we can't require them to have a facility before because you can't get a lease on a hope and a promise, you know? So it's, it's, it's hard, so. Okay, thank you for that.
In, in looking at these conditions, I think we had said that Equip would open a location on the west side. You mean the west side of Albuquerque, west of the Rio Grande. I think the school understands that, we understand that, but when we went to look at the language, make sure that it said that, it doesn't say, it just says west side. So we're going to continue to have it be west of the Rio Grande.
Yeah. Microphone, please.
Commissioner Ringham, can you turn your microphone on?
Sorry, I just was suggesting that west of Broadway is the west side. And so there is a significant area that's between Broadway and, and the river.
The river, yeah.
That is potential. And I would hate to limit them in that realm just because of that, if, if that's what they're, that's what they come across.
I think so, I've, I've had conversations with Equip about it because it's, so the, the location that they're looking at, it's actually, it still is like a kind of a complicated spot because it's what, and, and they're going to provide documentation to clarify this for us when they do it. But it's actually right on the border of Riera Rancho in Albuquerque. Like just south of Intel, just south of the car dealership. And it's like almost on the line there, there's a big old college campus that. Um, and it's like almost on the line there. There's a big old college campus that's vacant. And, um, it technically has a Rio Rancho address, but it's an APS boundary. So it's gonna, I, I, that's what I think, like kind of a, like up the hill and across the street. Like up, yeah. Um, so that's where their location that they're looking to start in. So I don't think it would be impacted by, by that.
That's actually farther away than the places that I was talking about. I mean, I thought they were looking for a more centrally located near a town. That's actually quite far north. It's, it's, it, it, that to me would not be ideal for their, what they described. But to find a facility, they gotta do what they gotta do, right? And so I'm not, I'm not challenging that decision at all. I'm just saying that's kind of disappointing in my, in my world.
Yeah. I talked to her about that too. I, I talked to her about that because I know that was something, that was part of like that discussion. Um, and her, she did already start ramping up the idea of trying to get lower income students from Bernalillo to be able to have access to that area. Um, and actually, when she looked at like the southwest quadrant, there's actually quite a few charter, um, elementary charters in that area. Whereas that north side actually doesn't have any. And so she actually started looking more towards, okay, can I get those kids up from Bernalillo, from the, from Pueblo's up in the air to come down? Um, to that area because it was, it is an ideal location because it was a college campus. So it's like this beautiful facility that they actually could grow into. It wasn't her ideal area either, but it is what the facilities kind of led her to. But she, she acknowledged that too, was like, it wasn't exactly what I was wanting, but this is my plan to still serve understood students. Yeah.
That, it's just gonna be the transportation as with everything else.
Then you've already said this, but the school was approved and gave, gave notice to APS. So they have to be an APS.
Commissioner Taylor, did you want to say something?
Yeah, uh, on, on, uh, Sacramento School of Engineering, the, the options that they offered, they're all potential plans, but there's not really a plan in place. Does this answer our condition? Okay.
Just asked for a, a plan. We didn't ask them to have, uh, a completed, hopefully by contract negotiations. They'll have, because number one, they should have a better idea by that time of where their students are coming from. So that they can figure out, so hopefully by that time, but we didn't ask for them to have a completed answer to us on what they are doing with transportation. So it does. Okay? So I, I will move that the Sun Mountain Community School Outreach Plan be accepted. This condition be deemed satisfied and the key provisions of the plan be confirmed in the charter contract.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gibson, a second by Commissioner Taylor.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Kloszysilich?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Correio?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovenchain?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are 10 votes for, zero votes against. The motion passes.
Thanks. I will move that the Sacramento School of Engineering and Science Transportation Plan be accepted. This condition be deemed satisfied and the key provisions of this plan be confirmed in the charter contract.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson and a second by Commissioner Ingham.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Commissioner Kloszysilich?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovenchain?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Chair Burt?
Not yet. Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Correio?
Yes.
Secretary Beck? Yes. There are 10 votes for, zero votes against. The motion passes.
Item number 12, which is discussion and possible action regarding Dreams Denai Charter School. And the first, we have a number of concerns. Um, the first being the notification of, uh, governing board members because first the school has,
You meant 11, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did. I gave the wrong number. This is, this is item number 11, discussion with Dreams Denai Charter School regarding the stat, the status at the school. Um, and there are a number of concerns. Uh, we needed an update on the number of board members because it, they were below five. We did not know how, it was, it was unclear whether they were at one or whether they were at four or whether they were at three. And a number of us went through board minutes and still I had no idea, but they were definitely below five. They were when they came up. We need an update as to where they are in terms of the numbers of the board and if they are still under five. And then we, when we spoke with them last month, they had a student enrollment of 15. So we, they did into, and so just re, uh, reminding commissioners, the school's budget concern is not as much this year because they have a grant which will keep them afloat this year. School budget gave us a report that indicated that if they stay at this number for next year, they won't have that grant and they'll be about $205,000 less in their operational. So we had, the school said that they were working on a plan, an outreach plan to get students. So we asked them for an update on that. Yes. So are they here?
Yes, Nadine. Director Nadine Chato.
Thanks.
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, we can. Thank you. So, good morning, Nadine. Um, just a reminder, could you introduce yourself and spell your last name for the record?
Yes, um, I'm Nadine Chato. My last name is spelled C-H-A-T-T-O. And I'm the head administrator at Dreams Denai Charter School.
Is there, so just asking, is there anyone, is there anyone from the board with you?
Yes, I have two board members here with me. Um, I'll let them introduce themselves.
Yes.
And they spell their last name, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Greetings. My name is Veronica So. Last name is spelled T-S-O and I'm the, I'm board president.
Good morning, gentlemen. Adam J. Begay. Last name is B-E-G-A-Y-E.
So, good morning. And as I mentioned, um, we'd like, uh, an update as to the status of your board. And then if we can get confirmation from Missy about notifications. Uh, and so Nadine, if you could give us that update on your board membership?
Okay, as of today, we have four board members. We have Veronica So, we have Adam Begay, we have Talaba Begay, and we also have Kirby Johnson. We have a potential board member that is here with us today, um, Dr. Vicenti. So right now four onboard and possibly another one here in about a couple more weeks. She is here, a potential member is here.
Thank you. Um, so Missy, do we have confirmation of notification of all? Or, well, I think one was still, so maybe three members we needed notifications for?
Um, we, we do have, um, I'm sharing a document that Bianca created. Um, so there were some late notices, but, um, excuse me. I believe at this point we have all of the documents.
The four current members.
Current members.
Okay. So thank you for that. Um, but there, and I understand you indicated that hopefully you have a fifth board member, uh, coming aboard soon. Um, please try, if, if you could, try to get that documentation in for us for the February meeting. Now, because you still are sitting below five. Well, I, because it's the, yes.
So they can submit before the meeting. Like their submission, it's like that's the 45 days, not when we hear it. Yeah, they're probably pretty close. Oh, 11/26 is when it dropped below five?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, they're already way past. Yeah. Yeah.
So Nadine, it really is critical that we get that documentation for the fifth board member?
Yes.
Thank you. So when we spoke last month, you had a, um, you indicated that you had a current enrollment last month of 15. So we asked for, uh, an update on your enrollment?
We have 17 actually. We have 17 students. Our 40th day was just confirmed and we had 18 at that time. We're still working through our kinks for the 80th day count, but right now we have 17.
So you, you had indicated that you were, you had some plans for community outreach. So have you been able to do some? And I'm guessing you didn't get any students then as a result of that outreach?
Yes, we have. Um, let, hold on a minute. Let me have Andrea Thomas speak to that. Thank you for having her.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Um, Andrea Thomas, last name T-H-O-M-A-S. Uh, yes, so since last meeting, we did make some recruitment efforts at the end of December, in the middle of December. Uh, so we went without, into our communities. Um, and we have an outreach community coordinator out who went out into the community and, um, along with a couple of our employees to try to recruit some students, um, prior to the winter break. Uh, unfortunately, we, we have people who were interested, um, and, but did not, um, enroll. Um, as you guys are aware, we have, uh, three, uh, elementary schools through CCSD and a tribally controlled school, um, in the community. So just kind of fighting for those students is, it has been a challenge. Um, middle of the year, families are kind of, you know, into wanting to, to stick to their schools unless something may have happened during the winter break. So coming back into January, uh, we have reached out into our chapter houses, our local chapter houses that surround the Shiprock community. Uh, there's three of them that are local. Um, and spoke at their, um, their public comments to share out about the school. I think the big feedback that we're receiving and the challenge is the transportation. So the families, as you guys are aware, we don't not, uh, we don't offer transportation. So the parents are, have to make the commitment to drive their kids. So I think that's one of the things that we are working with our families now, or we're working with our team now is to figure out how we're gonna go about in the new year, um, to provide transportation to those families. Um, and we are also, um, last night we actually hosted a Winter Wonderland. So we had a literacy night and we opened our community up, um, with our families, um, in hopes of in, encouraging other community members to come out, see our community, um, look into our classrooms. We had Christmas lights set up, um, luminarias. It was something we wanted to do in December. Um, we were just a little bit behind. Um, it was a good turnout. We had, um, our families and just other, their came in who have kids that they're curious about wanting to know where the community is located, what we're doing. And just meet the staff. Uh, the other thing that we, um, are working on, Nadine and I have really kind of reached out is to think about the recruitment for next full year, the kindergarteners. So we at Dreams Denai, um, are located next to a New Mexico Head Start, uh, childcare facility. And so we've been partnering, we've been talking in conversations of going to their parent nights and hoping that their students who are ready to transition into the school, next school year, um, because they're right in their backyard can start to look at Dreams Denai as a possibility. Uh, we are also using our, um, network within Navajo Nation Head Start uh, to work with them and figuring out how we can connect with them to get their, to help to transition. I think a lot of the families who have, um, who immediately are, CCSD, Central Consolidated Schools offers preschool. So when the families go in there, it's easier to transition their families into, um, into the schools. So, um, you know, that we, since we don't offer preschool here at Dreams Denai, um, utilizing those resources will be, uh, very beneficial for us. Um, another person that we have spoken to and we are working with is San Juan Community College, which is located in Farmington. So they have, um, families who are parents who attend the school there and live here in Shiprock. So they've asked us and we're curious about wanting to know how they can work with us to start having their kids maybe, start thinking of childcare as, uh, kindergartners, I mean, kindergartners, um, in the next school year. So those are some of the efforts that we've worked on within the past, um, month. Uh, and, uh, this coming weekend, we are working, we're gonna have a, um, gosh, a board retreat, uh, with our incoming board members and our staff. And we are going to be, uh, working on our strategic plan, um, now that, and to update our new board members, um, onto our team. So those are the efforts we have been doing within that timeframe. So any questions?
Commissioner Brower, but before Commissioner, uh, Missy has an update on the notifications, so. Mike, this, mic, microphone, Missy?
Thank you, Cindy. I want to apologize to the school. I want to apologize to the commission and I mostly want to apologize to Bianca. I did not note the note, notice the note at the bottom. Uh, so we are still missing, um, assurances affidavit and a statement to consult for both, um, Adam Begay and Talaba Begay. Um, and I also wanted to just say that if, um, a potential new member would like to sign up for board training before they're being appointed to the board, uh, we can set them up.
Okay, thank you. So did you hear the two members and the documentation that still is needed with them?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Begay is with us and he is aware of it. He's sitting right here, so. We are, we're, we're getting on there. We're, we're doing what we need to do.
I, I'm sorry. I didn't quite get that.
You said that Mr. Begay is there and that he knows that he has to-
Oh, I gotcha. Okay.
They're working on it.
Commissioner Brower?
Great, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Thank you Dreams Denai team and, and ISN, uh, team that's there with you all. Uh, I, uh, I think that, uh, I know that you all are gonna be working hard to get the, the assurances and the other documentation that we, that we need and, uh, to get everybody on, on boarded. I do, uh, I do thank Ms. Thomas. Thank you for giving the overview of, of what has been happening for getting the student enrollment, uh, up. I know that, uh, less than two years ago, we, uh, the school was around 45 kids, 40 kids, uh, at the, at the very least. And so I know that there's opportunity there. Um, I think that, sorry, excuse me. I think that it's important to kind of think about how do you get the numbers for students enrolled now? But we also know, I mean, as a educator, working in schools, it's hard to get students from one school to another at this time in the year. So it's just, it's just the kind of, kind of the way it is unless families are moving, um, or leaving, leaving, uh, CCSD or a BIE school for, for a certain reason. Uh, I do think this is a moment, uh, and I'm not going, I'm not asking, uh, this is just like a little bit of like suggestion, if I was in your shoes, to really start to put a full press on, uh, recruiting for- to really start to put a full press on recruiting for next year. This is your moment to recruit for next year. It's great to hear Ms. Thomas, how you all are thinking about the kindergarteners coming in. But I think you need to be doing K-5 recruitment. Like we should, we ought to be talking about, how do we get the numbers up as they, as they were just after COVID? So that you have a lot of, a lot of opportunities for, for young people, especially the Dene-centered, the Dene-language-centered work that you all are doing. That is an area in my belief that separates you from the other schools in the local community. And so my hope is that, and I am concerned about hearing that we're at 17 students at the school. That's really hard to keep doors open. I don't have to tell any of you that, the hardship that that puts the school in. But I hope, and I, I, I think that this is the challenge for the governing council and for the school to really take on and start to really hit, hit the recruitment for next year and having a really robust plan to get, to get K-5 students at the school. I also would say, like I, commissioners, I mean, I don't know anything about the, what's going on on the ground, but I imagine with the full governing council change, except for one person, oftentimes that comes in small towns. I know the, the small town that I grew up in and the small towns that I'm familiar with, including Shiprock, where the school is located. That may have happened, that may have hurt student enrollment. You know, some families might have been like, I only need to leave if this whole staff, or sorry, whole GC is turning over. And so I just know that that, that, that's a natural tendency. But now the school, this is your opportunity. This is your opportunity to get more young people at the school and engage more families and, and just really get this, this on, on the right path. So I am concerned to hear that we're a third of the student enrollment as we were a couple of years ago. That's hard. That's hard to hear. And I know that puts a lot of pressure on all aspects of running a school. And so my hope is that we can start to really hit the ground running on that and to get our governing council onboard and equipped for their work so that they can support the, the health of the school.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yeah. I also want to challenge you guys. You know, five members for a board is the minimum. And that, I recognize that you've had a wrestling match to get that, get up to that level. But I would ask you and challenge you to not let up on recruiting members in your community and engaging with your community to get more active people on your board so that you don't run into this situation again, because we don't, you know, with a completely new board, that's a whole nother level of people that have, have other issues in their lives. And so you really don't want to function on the bare minimum. So I would, they don't give up on recruiting board members and engaging with your, your community there and challenging them to support your school by being a board member and looking for people that have a skillset that will really enable your board to be much more, much better functioning board. Because this was really a tragic event that has occurred here. And we certainly don't want to see you guys falling below five again. That would be really tragic. So I just want to encourage you to get more than five if you possibly can. Thank you.
So hopefully next month we'll have the notification and all the additional documentation for the other board members so that we'll be in good standing with, with that. Yeah. Commissioner Kloszysilich?
Yes, thank you. I just want to add to some of the remarks that were being made. And I know that this is a very difficult task to fulfill because of the community. I mean, we have, I look at all the schools that are within Shiprock and then the surrounding communities. And we have a lot of the same members who are serving on the various boards unavailable. So I guess it's time to dig into maybe other parts like teachers. And I know, I know you've done this already, but I think that like CCSD, I'm looking at all the people who are members there and then some of the old other school districts. So I know that it's really hard trying to recruit to serve on the boards. But in addition, I know it made, what's made everything even more difficult is the departure of the plants. We have, we've lost our populations because families have moved out of state and then have moved into different parts of the state. Children are, are experiencing various school districts in one year. Within the community that I live in, we have, in fact, in fact, within Gadi, I, we have three families that have returned from Texas and are, are in the process of getting their children registered into three public schools there. So we have that going on. And then I suspect, I suspect the same three will probably be moving out again. And the, they mentioned that they probably will move back to Texas. So there's this, there's a lot of transitioning going on within the Shiprock area because I know we're, the whole community is still adapting, adjusting to what is going on in terms of the remove, the plants leaving and then people moving out, seeking temporary employment. So this impacts what you're trying to do in terms of getting people to serve on boards. And also what makes it really difficult too, I know, is the difficulty of getting the people educated to charter schools. You have the, you have, not only do you have the public school, then you have the tribal schools, you have BIE schools. All of that clustered in, in Shiprock. And so getting the charter school concept across to the community is a lot of work. But I know you're doing that and I know you're doing it with a lot of effort because I've seen it. So maybe I could help in identifying some people who would be good at the, at the board level and who are available. We have a lot of retirees that I'm sure would, wouldn't mind serving on the board. So I can help that way in identifying some people. So I just wanted to add that because I know that the community is really depressed because of the removal of the plants. And, and then we're up for another removal again soon. So the main workers at these plants were Navajos. And so therefore the families of the people who are without a job are impacted and, and falls back on, on a dream Dene school. So I, I definitely want to step up and help you all in identifying this, the dilemma you're in. So I will be by and I'll see how I can help in identifying people to serve on your board. And, and maybe I can talk to the three families that I know who have just moved back from Texas and see if they know about charter schools. So that's what I can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Openshaw?
Yes, thank you. First of all, are those baked lot of burger burritos that are on the table? It looks like that bag that I'm familiar with. Anyway, you're making my mouth water, but I know that you mentioned what the big challenges was transportation. And I've wondered, I'm just wondering if you've identified any other obstacles that you feel like are impacting your student population that potentially could be like, for lack of a better term, low-hanging fruit that you could look at and identify? Here's what's keeping kids from coming. I know transportation is a big one because I've, I've worked in charter schools where we didn't have transportation and it was up to the parents and other places where we did. And that made a big difference in terms of our ability to recruit. So I just was wondering if you had identified other obstacles to your student enrollment situation? Thank you.
This is Tato again, Commissioner Crenshaw. That, transportation is the main obstacle that we are facing right now. We did some parent family surveys and out of those surveys, we've realized that a lot of them had issues with transportation, bringing their students to and from, which impacts, you know, attendant, it impacts our morning instruction. So some students do, when they get here, it's late and they're always giving us, telling us that they can't get here on time because car trouble or, you know, they, whoever was using the vehicle the night before didn't bring it back, you know, those kinds of things. So we're really looking at transportation. I know we, this is one of the reasons why we brought NISN out here this weekend. They're going to help us strategize in getting a, a bus, possibly just one. And with that, we also talked about maybe how we were going to take care of the expenses on it. So that is the biggest, the biggest challenge that we have at this point. And we're going to really work hard on it because I know next year, that is going to be the question again, do we have transportation? So yeah, that's, I, we don't see any other barriers. I mean, things that we can, that, that we could control, things that we have control over, for instance, transportation and getting that is the, is the only thing that we can really think of right now that would help us. So transportation, yeah, that's a big one. Thank you for the comments, everyone. And then I, I'm, I can't even think right now. Let me give the floor back to Ms. Thomas. She has also something that she wants to comment on. Thank you.
So thank you for the question and comments, commissioners. I think a lot of what everybody has said into the employment opportunities that have a challenge for families. But you know, kind of with what we have, what, what's available to us and what we see as challenges. One of the other things where we have families come by and, you know, preview the school, look at it. And it's something that we're in the works of doing is getting a new facility. I mean, the buildings, you know, you want to send to your student, you want to go to a school where it looks appealing. It looks exciting, you know, as much as we try to utilize what we have at our school and, you know, what's surrounding our communities, we are in portables with limited space. You know, we don't have a gym. We don't, there's a lot of things that we're, you know, we haven't had in the past. You know, when we transitioned into, or we made the decision to go and become a state charter, some of the things that we, you know, talked about, about, you know, wanting to do and provide different opportunities for students that that was going to be the start to the potential for what we could have for our students. And so the facilities, you have a facilities plan. We have somebody from NISN that's in the works. I mean, that has been a process in its own where over the years, you know, previously it just, it was there, but it wasn't. Nobody took, took, took the initiative to really move on it. Navajo Nation, getting land, all of those things have been a challenge, but we actually have a plan moving forward. So I think that that, you know, the transportation is the, is the biggest issue. But again, look, going to a school that, you know, you have a library and all these resources that some of these schools are used to having. And it's just something that I think that would help us to, our, our students to, to get that in recruitment, but that's in the future. You know, I think that also when we came before you guys last year, you know, and wanting to become a charter, we knew that we were going to have to up the stakes. You know, we looked at our student enrollment, our, I mean, our growth, our student outcomes. And we had to reimagine and, you know, kind of, or re-envision what it is that we were going to do to hold our students and families accountable to have, you know, for the student accountability when it comes to their academics. And I think that that has been the biggest, the stress that I have seen as an educator myself within this community is the attention to how do we, how do we focus on increasing the academic performance of our, of our students? And those, you know, with the former governing council, with, you know, all of, with our staff, what we have and with our parents as well, I think that that was the shift that we've had since the beginning of the school year, which may have, you know, deteriorate, like detoured, like some of the students and families from saying, wait a minute, are you supposed to be language and culture? If you're supposed to, if that's your emphasis, shouldn't you focus on it? Well, here at the same time focusing on the academics. And we're still trying in our first year as a charter to learn and understand what we're supposed to do as a state charter. But also as, you know, when we're focusing on the students and their outcomes, how are we going to, you know, have them have the, the, the growth that is needed to show you guys, once we come in, to say, we deserve to have, you know, we deserve to be here and this is our plan that we have for our student outcomes. And so that's, that, that's been, that's interesting, that, that has been something that we, you know, we planned for. But now that we, we put it in place and we see it, it did, it wasn't quite the outcome, you know, that we were wanting to have. You know, and I think previously, when it talks about, when we talked about the high enrollment at 45, that was when we were offering hybrid. You know, we had students who were still coming out of the pandemic, who wanted the opportunity to be in person, but also remote. So when those things were happening, you were able to have that. But then again, once we start to up the rigor, the accountability, then those, those parents, families started to like, oh, wait a minute, I don't know. Why are you calling about my child always being absent? Why is it that you're having my child, you know, have to maybe have some extended help or stay after school because of transportation issues that, you know? So those things are some of the challenges that we've had. And unfortunately, we just, we, we did what we could at the time. But as we move forward, those, I'm not using those as excuses. I'm just explaining those are the things that I've noticed since I've been here at Dreams and Net. And those are what we have thought of and are making plans for in our strategic planning. So transportation and facility. So thank you.
Thank you for that. I appreciate the comprehensive response.
Oh, item number 12 is our discussion in the action. Going to do it? Oh, sure.
Hey, good morning. So I, I really do appreciate the, the group that came together to speak to us today. It's definitely helpful when I see a team, you know, together, working together. So that it, that does give me hope for your future. And I, I hear and I can empathize with where you're at and what you're going through. That being said, I, I still, I love this school. I want this school to succeed. I think it's in a, in a, one of those pivotal transitional moments. And I think sometimes those moments are healthy, growing pains. You know, I know that, that this being your first year under PEC and, and out of CCSD, there's probably going to be some transition. There's going to be some work that's different. And I totally understand when those moments happen, some people who are used to an old system and a new system get started. They don't really fall into the new system. They don't want to be a part of a new system. Things change. They don't really fall into the new system. They don't want to be a part of a new system. Things change. People move on and I understand how that, it's, it seems to me that's kind of where the board ended up in. My hope is that this is one of the healthy transitional times, that it's like the healthy growing pains that you have to get to, to get to that solid board, doing the work, creating your plan. I'm hopeful for your time spent together this weekend, creating that strategic plan moving forward. I also think this is also a time that could be the nail in the coffin, right? So transitional times, they either, it's the pain and it ends up for the best, or it's a pain and then it doesn't get better. So I think where you are today is just, I'm seeing the, the pain points. And where it's going to come from here, I'm very hopeful for you all. I, I'm, I, I am rooting for you all for all the success, but because we're right now in the pain point, I think it's important just to have clear expectations and documentation of it. So that if you all start progressing and you go in the right path, we get to kind of move forward and, and move past this and if this is part of your, your story of, yep, we made this transition and it was hard. And we went through some really big struggles that first year, but it set us up for what we need in the future. But I also want to protect ourselves. If in that future it doesn't go well, that we do have, I, I think just clear documentation of where the school's at right at this moment. So that if it is something that continues to happen over and over again, we don't have to kind of restart every time with, okay, now something else, now something else. So I am going to support a letter of concern going to the school for what has happened previously, just falling below that, that five. I also, I also saw that in December, at the meeting, there was only two members that were able to vote. And there were understandably, there's some action items that happened that were due to, that were specific to adding and removing members, which we know, like that's, that's what we talked about yesterday, that this is happening with boards and they don't have bylaws to protect them. And I think that's where, once again, the school is an example of why we need to do, have schools protecting themselves when this happens. But also other action was taken with only two members voting, which is not appropriate either. So I did ask to include a provision in the motion about when you do get those five members, that those items that were only voted by, by two members do get re-looked at by a full board and get re, have another vote on those items, once you have all five members to save off OMA violations from having only two members present. So I don't, I, I see this as a way, I actually think this, I would support a letter of concern going out. But I also think this is something that I do think can be resolved within the next month. And ideally we can clear the school and have you continue moving forward with those corrections being made. But I do want to make it just clear what the expectations are, what we expect of the school and how they can correct it. But I think we would be amiss to just give another opportunity and have it go without a letter of concern at this time. But I do think, I, I, I believe in your school, I believe in you all. I, I, I'm grateful for the work that you're already putting in. I do hope that the strategic plan and the board retreat is a massive success and gives you some clear guidance moving forward and you're able to really start tipping away on the progress that you're wanting to see yourselves. Cause I know none of you want, you know, to not be in a great space as well. So that's kind of where I'm standing with you all today. And once again, you know, hopeful that we can clear this out next month and that we really see that increase in enrollment next school year to where you're not only just educating kids in, in, in a way that's best for them, but also making your school fiscal, fiscally viable to continue into the future. You know, I hope you all really lean into what's making your school special. Because that's what, my concern is, you know, if you're going out and you're trying to recruit students and you're not really getting the bites, it does make me concerned that the, the community's not seeing the value of your school. So really leaning into like what your school is doing differently is probably going to be your best bet moving forward. And that's what, I mean, parents or families, they'll choose you for what they're not getting at their, at their school that they're already in and, and where their kids already have friends. So I really do hope you all lean into that special mission of your goal, of, of your school, so that those students can receive that excellent education that I know that your, your school community can offer them.
Correa and then Commissioner Sussulic.
The things that Commissioner Burt had said. And I was going over my notes from the November board meeting that I sat in on for you all. And I mentioned this earlier, you may have heard me say my concerns about the OMA and boards and governing councils adhering, you know, to the letter of the OMA. So, and I say that in this particular case, because as I was watching and when the folks went into executive session, I mean, to me, listening to why, how it was presented, why you were going in, it was a, it was just a complete violation of OMA. I mean, you're, you're so limited as to why you can go into executive session. Very limited. So you have to be like really, really clear and you have to make sure that it's noticed. You have to make sure that you come out of executive session in a vote and all these different procedures. We're happy to help you. CSD and Miss Yeha happy to help you with that if you need it. But it's a big deal. So just want to mention that. Thank you.
Commissioner Burke? Hello?
Yes.
I'd like to give a point of understanding for us as commissioners. Just to help us understand, in addition to what Dream Denet has to, I guess, market for themselves. In choosing a board member, and this is something that was triggered by what Commissioner Burke said. And I remember that one big concern that I have in selecting board members for, for the charter school is this. They are competing with board members who earn up to $500 to attend their board meetings. And I don't think the charter school, char, I mean, has like a, an amount that they pay. And this is how a lot of the government, the, the feds are doing and even the, I think the publics, I don't know, the public school does it, but a lot of the attendance is poor because I'm sure is poor because the charter school does not give a stipend for attending their meetings. And that's a, that's a hefty amount to have to combat and get people to attend for the sake of, you know, the quality of the school, for helping their, their students, helping students in school and academics. So that's just a point to think about. I, I know that the highest I know that is paid in way of a stipend in the area is $500. And then it goes down, I don't know how low, but the highest I know of is 500. So that's something to think about too, in, in the attempt to get board members for the school. Thank you.
Thank you. So commissioners, we did get an update and we do in fact have to approve notifications because there, there was documentation. It did come in, completed, there's still some out, but we do have a notification that we have to. Oh, it's on the resignations? Okay. Any, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I hope I'm not stealing like your, your thunder and the specific subcommittee's work. But I do, Ms. Chata, I have just a real quick clarification question. Have you received an email from Commissioner, from Chair Gibson about some funding that we have available to schools?
For transportation or?
No, no, it's more of a, up to $10,000 special project funding.
No, I, I did hear about it, but I did not get a letter.
Okay. I think, check, check your emails should be coming through there. If you, if you haven't received it, there, and you're receiving other things from us, we got to, we got to think about why, why that might be. But definitely look into that. There, it's, it's $10,000, up to $10,000. I think you, I, I would beho, it would behoove you and your team, including the NISN team, to consider how, how to potentially utilize that funding and come up with a plan for that. Many of our schools have already. I, I have noticed that you have not applied yet. And so I think that would be really great. I see Dr. Vicenti there as well. I know she works with the, the NAY language apprenticeship program. And I just think about opportunities for you all to really invest in, in some, some pretty straightforward opportunities with, with funding from us that could support and level set some of the, the trainings that you have there. I think those are things that, that I just want to make sure that the school is taking advantage of and that you're, that you're seeing that. And you're seeing that there is like a, a real deep opportunity here to use that in good ways.
Okay, thank you.
So Nadine, to build on what Commissioner Brower said, this is not some big major hoop and application process to jump through. Super simple. You have complete autonomy over what you want to do. The only requirement is really that you're addressing some sort of, some part of your performance framework. That's really the only thing that we want you to be doing. You know, someplace where you maybe have a yellow or lead, you can pilot some program in your school or whatever. And really, and I want you to think of this because I'm really kind of surprised that a lot of the schools that haven't put in for this, it's free money. It's your money. The whole idea of this program that was put together by this committee was to take the money, instead of this money reverting back, you know, to the general budget or being swept by PED, we want to make sure, because this is your money from the 2%, it goes back to you. So we've had a surprisingly low number, given that we have 58 charters. We've had a surprisingly low number in the initial offering. But please don't let this opportunity go by. 10,000 free money. Pretend it's sitting on the table over your right shoulder. Are you going to grab it or not? It's really that simple. The blank bag. There you go. All right. Just wanted to emphasize that. Thanks, Nadine.
I move that the notification of board member resignations provided in document 12 be accepted.
Second.
Commissioner Gibson and a second by Commissioner Taylor.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Obenchain?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Kloschusilich?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham? Vice Chair Correa?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes. There are 10 votes for, zero votes against. Motion passes.
I further move that Dream Denet Charter School be issued a notice of concern. For the failure to maintain the minimum number of board members required by the Charter School Act, the school must have a complete board of at least five members by the February PEC meeting. And for the failure to timely review the contract, performance framework, condition, annual report and annual notice and execute the assurance form. Once a full board of five is in place at the school, the new board is required to review the contract, annual reports and annual report notices and provide a second completed assurance form by the February PEC meeting. Any action taken during a time that the board did not have sufficient membership should be confirmed by a full board of five members.
Okay.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, a second by Commissioner Taylor.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Correa?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Commissioner Kloschusilich?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Commissioner Obenchain?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Burt?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes. There are 10 votes for, zero votes against. The motion passes.
Thank you. Can we take a 10 minute break? Yeah.
All right. Thank you, every commissioners. Can they hear us? Can they hear me?
Thanks, Nadine. Thanks, everybody.
Is it an appropriate time to just ask if I have a question about all of, like, the report itself? Like an overall? Okay. Okay. Um, so my only question is in the demographic data of all of them. I, I noticed that the numbers do not add up to 100%. And so I was like, first thinking maybe it's an error, but I also was like, maybe it's being calculated a different way where students aren't allowed to pick two different designations or something. I don't, so I'm wondering about the demographic data because I would see schools that have like 89% Hispanic, 90% white, 7%, you know, like, and so that kind of threw me off.
Uh, yes, Chair Gibson and Chair Burt. We use the data provided in the Nova reports and sometimes, yes, the, the, the short answer is students are able to select multiple ethnicities. So, so it will be more than 100%.
So does that impact when we're looking at, for example, like the student group academic data? How does it impact the way student groups are being listed there?
Great question and one into which I am twisting myself into a pretzel over. Because really, I mean, how, so we don't want to double count students, but if, you know, if there is a student group that is under the Martinez-Yasi lawsuit and the student selects native and white, there is a category that, that Nova reports for any native. So not just exclusively, but any. So we can capture that. But it requires some fine tuning on our end in terms of the business rules.
And that might be something, especially as we are calculating growth in the future, especially on those two and three data. two and three data, like, it seems like it's definitely going to make it more complicated. I think it's more fair to the students because I know there's many students who feel very uncomfortable having to select one. And it's just inappropriate, like, as humans, right? But I, I do get worried about then what that looks like when we're looking at achievement gaps. Like, how does that impact that? So I know that makes that more complicated on your side. If there's a way to, like, be able to arti, that I, like, be able to articulate it to where I would be able to articulate it, that would be great in the future.
So, thank you. Um, yes, I, I actually, I would, I would recommend that the Performance Framework Subcommittee, um, meet with, with Dr. Faulkner and Dr. Ernst and myself to talk about these issues and maybe someone from ARIA at PED because I, I want, I really feel a responsibility to get this right.
I actually appreciate, I think that's a great idea. Appreciate it. And I'm, I'm glad it wasn't just that the numbers are all wrong. Because that would have been, I was like, oh, there's a 200% at this school, 200% of students. Okay. No, I appreciate, thank you for that.
Julia.
I had a question on Vista Grande. There was a note that I didn't quite follow. It said that the school did not provide information on the negotiated academic indicator. But then it looked like you poured everything on the academic indicator. So I just, I wasn't sure when I was doing the motion, what, what that, what that was.
So, um, Chair Gibson, Ms. Barnes, on page, page seven of the annual report, um, there are some of the columns where it says unable to rate or NA. That was, those were the, the areas that we did not receive data on. So we, we were not able to use 100 as a denominator because we didn't receive data on each component of, of the Option 3 framework.
So, did you feel like you could, you did score it?
We did.
And do you feel like the PEC can take action or do you feel like it was incomplete?
I, I do feel that, like, the PEC can take action on it.
Okay. And then, um, I, I think when we get to the conditions, um, you should just identify if you received condition paperwork or, or not a condition compliance form because it seems like you received that from some of the schools with conditions, but not others. So I, I just think that the PEC should, you should flag it when we get to that item, kind of where you are on each condition and what the CSV recommendation
Okay.
on the condition is.
So we did attach condition documents from each school that submitted them. And so you want me to go through the reports one by one and say, is there a condition? If so, did we receive something or just flag once that we did not receive condition documentation from?
On, I,
Number two.
The number two for sure, but also they're, they're going to take a separate vote on each condition. So I think maybe, maybe Chair, what you do is just ask for a brief update on the condition document when you get to that vote.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just messaging someone on my team. I, I am aware of one school that did not provide a condition document and I just want to make sure I'm not overlooking any others.
Any additional general questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept? I got it. If you want to do it, you can. I move that the PEC accept the annual reports for school year 2324 provided by the Charter School Division for the schools identified in Agenda 13A through 13Y.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson and a second by Commissioner Taylor.
Commissioner Obashin?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus? Commissioner Manus? Oh, okay. Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Klosasilic?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Correo?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes. There are 10 votes for, zero votes against. The motion passes. Bless you.
We are on to item number 14, which is now the discussion and possible action regarding the PEC annual notices, including possible action under the intervention ladder and action on conditions. So the first school is Albuquerque Collegiate. Commissioner Burt?
Yeah, I mean, I can just say for, for this school, I, man, the, the academic data that is in this school is outrageous. I mean, they, I, I hope this school is celebrating with its students, its, its teachers, the work that's being done there because wow, like, the, the proficiency rates are just so much above anywhere else. And not just for New Mexico, like, we're getting into good status just in general, right? So, um, I know this school in partic, like, is one of those schools that is, mission is to serve underserved students. And sometimes that allow, you know, that, that allows some head leaders to be like, well, our students, and I'm just appreciate this school for showing that every student can learn. Every student can learn, every student can grow and, um, what they're doing is working. So I would, I would actually, I, I think they were spotlight school. I would, I would be open to giving them an exemplary status, but with the unsatisfactory performance and financial and just acknowledging that they did have that red. I, I am, I'm, I would not be surprised if that red doesn't go away by next year, but I still think documenting is appropriate.
Yep, agreed.
So, uh, I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to Albuquerque Collegiate Charter School indicating a notice of exemplary performance and identify the unsatisfactory performance related to Accounting Principles 5B on page 10 of the annual report. The unsatisfactory performance should be corrected by the next annual report.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, a second by Commissioner Burt.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Correo?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Mr. Klosasilic?
Yes.
Mr. Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Obenchain?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes. There are 10 votes for, zero votes against. The motion passes.
Thanks. We are on to be Alma de Arte Charter High School. And, um, the school did provide comment that is attached. And also, this will be two votes because they have a condition.
Uh, Chair Gibson and Commissioners, this is the school that did not provide a condition document. There was a general, um, request for conditions.
Microphone?
So CSD staff placed, um, a submission item in Epicenter for all schools regarding condition documents and schools were to put NA if they didn't have one. Um, when, when we did not receive one from Alma, um, our, our staff put a specific, a school-specific request into Epicenter on December 31st with the due date of January 10th. And we have not received it. And it, you know, in fairness, Epicenter is a new system and we, we have not sent out a reminder email, we didn't get this from you, but it, it was not submitted in Epicenter.
But this is also the third year of their condition. So, um, and my only concern about letting this, we've told schools that. That's where I want to be fair. So, okay, so the first part is the annual report and looking at the annual report. Commissioner Burt?
Now, so, um, I do, this is, this, this report to me is like, um, is one of those ones where it feels more like a struggle than maybe I should make it. Because I do know when we see these, we're looking in the rearview mirror. We're looking in hindsight. You know, this isn't a reflection of today at the school by any means. It's not even a reflection of since July last year at the school. You know, it's the, like, the complete previous year. And so it's hard to, like, for me always to grapple with what I know, the actions that are being taken currently, the oversight that's being taken currently, and then receiving reports that are basically, you know, outdated, but that appropriate still. Like, this is still appropriate for us to be doing this, but they are outdated. So it's always hard in my brain to, like, coordinate the two. Um, so I do want to say I, I do congratulate the school for exiting, um, the Priority Schools Bureau Program. I actually, that, like, that is a, that's a big deal, um, for the school to have exited out of there. That, to me, shows, shows progress. And that's out, from a different accountability system outside of our own. And so to see that does reinforce that, you know, there are, there is progress getting made at the school. There is. I think, I, once again, this is, to me, documentation of kind of more of the chaos that was happening last school year and how that was, how that's just was, it's that moment in time, right? Like, right when that was looked at, that's what was happening. And it's, and, and it is accurate for what was happening then. So I do, even though I, I, I do want to continue seeing the progress from the school and acknowledge the progress of the school, this was accurate then. Um, and so I do think, I, 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 I struggle a little bit with wondering, um, you know, the perception of the other org, like, of PSB working with them and seeing them in really high regards and being able to, like, really show the progress that the school's made. And I don't think we have that kind of view. Um, which also, once again, is a struggle. But, um, I, I do want to, I do support sending a similar letter, you know, the, the motion that's in, I do support, you know, showing that it, at last school year, the school was not in the status that it wants to be itself even, much less for us. So, um, I do support sending the letter of unsatisfactory, any uncorrected unsatisfactory, acknowledging that. And then really, once again, going back to focus on the cap, focus on the additional oversight from the school as being that primary lever of additional accountability, of additional oversight and make, hopefully, continuing progress moving forward. So that's kind of where I'm standing, is acknowledge it and kind of move on. And then let's talk about, like, where the cap is and how we need to, do we need to adjust anything in the cap? Do we need to do anything different based off of the information that we have from last year and the information the school's provided more recently?
And I, I have a similar struggle because you're looking at real-time information coming in and now you're looking at this. I do have concerns when someone goes from a green to a red. That's a, you know, those are big dips. So, um, but I, I agree. I think at this point in time, um, with this document, I think we follow the course of what, similar to what we did last year and note any of the uncorrected unsatisfactory, because it is. You know, and we're never going to get out of this cycle where we're going to be able to do annual reports in July. You know, it's just not going to happen. Um, we're in a better space than we have been. We have, but we're, we're close to exactly the cycle we'll ever be in because of the state accountability system. So it's, um, you know, it, that's the world we live in right now. Or are we? I'm just reading, quick reading through it to make sure, yeah. Exactly. Okay. You want me to do it or do you want me? Okay. So I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice for the 23, 2024 school year to Alma de Arte Charter High School indicating a notice of unsatisfactory performance, that the school is not on track for renewal, and identify the following. That the school has continued to work on issues of concern at the school as identified in the corrective action plan and on several issues identified in the last annual report. This will continue to be monitored. The school made the following improvements. Changing the Vista's designation of CSI to traditional. The improved academic proficiency rates in science. Employee rights scoring improved. Resolving issues of concern regarding special education findings and resolving issues of concern related to finances. That the following uncorrected unsatisfactory performance continues to be of concern. The low academic proficiency rates in math. The, the low graduation rates. The inability to provide data for the mission-specific indicators resulting in no score. The overall designation on the organizational and financial frames to be framework of does not meet and the unsatisfactory performance related to rights of students with disabilities, rights of all students, staff credentialing and 5B, 5C, and 5F indicators related to fiscal management. That the following items were identified as new unsatisfactory performance related to 2C reporting requirements, 3C background checks, 4A health and safety, 4E information accessible to the public, and 5E staffing for fiscal management. I further move that the uncorrected unsatisfactory performance be added to the corrective action plan to be remedied by the end of the 2425 school year.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, second by Commissioner Taylor.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus? Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Obenchain?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Correo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham? Commissioner Klosasilic?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes. There are 10 votes for, zero votes against. That motion passes.
We are now on to the, um, Alma de Arte condition. And as indicated by the deputy director, they did not submit any, and, you know, I acknowledge the newness of Epicenter, but also this, this is something that the school has had to submit in some fashion for now the third year. So, um, they could have emailed. Okay. No, no.
So, so my question would be, is this where we kind of trigger that next month, let's let the school come talk to us? Do some fact-finding, figure out what's going on and then make a decision at that point? Because I don't feel appropriate, like, I, I want to be like, let her concern, you know, that, I do feel like that, but also I wonder what the other side of the story is. I do want to have all the information. I don't feel like I have all of it. And I do think it's appropriate to, once again, let a school come, give us information to the full body, and then make a decision at that time. So I would say today to trigger that process being started to where we can then issue a letter of concern the next, on Friday, or like, it's a Thursday to Friday, something along those lines, are we?
After 30 days, you have to, you have to wait another 30, so that takes.
I don't think we do. I think we can do, we, actually, so this was something, I forgot, this was in policy subcommittee, not in the real world. But maybe, maybe it's still something that we can, like, consider, I don't know. But that's where I do, I do not want to issue a letter of concern today until I'm able to speak to the school, have information from them, get the full breadth of knowledge from all sides. And today's just not an appropriate venue to do that.
Commissioner Taylor?
I disagree. I feel like they, they, they know what the deadlines are. If we issue a, a letter of concern, they can be here next month and explain why we issued their, you know, what the, the, what the issue was with them.
So, I need my memory because I, well, number one, they're on the intervention ladder already. So it's kind of cumbersome to a letter of concern which triggers the intervention ladder when they're already on the intervention ladder. So it's like, we've got dueling letters going on. So that gets a little.
For different issues.
I think, so if I remember correctly, part of the intervention ladder concern was their condition document, if I remember correctly. I think we've already identified that from last school year, the year before last school year, that that, so, can you check that? But I think that's already, I know we've had discussions with them about it. Because I, I do, I do remember that there was a point for the 22, 23 school year that they had not submitted yet.
So my, my, I guess the angst I have is that, that it wasn't submitted in a timely fashion. You know, I, I, I agree that, that, and it, it's not like this hasn't been a semi-pattern with Alma, so.
Commissioner Carrillo?
I agree with Michael. I don't care how, if a school have seven letters of concern, that's fine with me, if they're all for different issues. It's just, this is just so ongoing. And so, I mean, the fact that there's been plenty of time to be able to put in, to respond. I, I, I think a letter of concern is absolutely warranted here. They can come up next month and give us whatever rationalization or excuse they may have. And, but there's a, there's a point at which it's like, you know, the gavel has to fall, or the whatever metaphor I'm.
So I asked Julia to check to see if we've already identified it as a concern, so that they would be coming up. And we've covered it because they, it's already been identified as a concern.
So from the letter last year, you reported the school's condition of renewal as unsatisfactory. They did give you a report, so you accepted that report. Then proficiency, the progress towards proficiency and growth of students was found to be insufficient. Compliance with the reporting on the condition was insufficient. And the timing and information required to submit the condition in a timely, complete manner needed to be corrected. And that is in the letter that you sent out last year.
Did you say last year, when last year? Is this January?
The annual report letter from last.
Actually, went out on April 26th.
From this time.
Annual report notice for last year.
Commissioner Burt?
I'm just going to take this as an opportunity to use the school as an example of how we're just letting things go way too long. Like, the, the fact that the condition that, like, we're looking, like, we need these issues brought to us sooner. We have, we have to get these issue brought, because this is an, it's an inappropriate form to do this work in. Because at the end of, as an annual report from last year, and we're going to look at it eight months later, we could have addressed this last July, you know? Like, that's where, that's where I keep coming to. I still, I, and once again, I, I'm completely open to ensuring this school, like, information is documented and what's not working and what's not happening from the school side, that I will feel like a fool if we issue something today saying, you didn't do this, and then they come up and they have another side to the story that we didn't listen, that we did not hear them out on first. Like, I'm, I just don't want to keep doing this reverse thing where we send something out and we're like, you did this wrong. Then they come up and they're like, well, look at this, like, here's, here's our side, and maybe there's something else that we don't know yet. And I would love to just have, I would, I would ask that they come next month, have this conversation with us, that we would do anyway, and issue the notice at that time. And maybe it's the next level, maybe it's, you know, but I feel like just issuing letters of concern without ever having a conversation first when we're talking about it, like, we're discussing this without them. We're not going to talk to them today. We do not talk to schools during this time. It feels more appropriate to have a conversation with a school than issue something after. Because that's my only, like, it's more of a process thing than it is, and I think it's a respect thing. Like, we're, like, we, we have one side of the story, and I would like, I, the other side of the story may be insufficient. It may also be, we might be wrong. And so I don't want to keep making those mistakes over and over again where we're jumping the gun. And then I, I feel foolish when a school comes up and says, oh, actually, that's not the case. So I would just ask that we start having the schools come up. And if it's an insufficient response, it's an insufficient response. We take action then. But right now, we don't have the response. And I feel like that's, it's okay to not have it today. Well, because we're not, we're not in the venue to do it. I, I do, I think if we, once again, if this had come to us months ago that they weren't doing their condition stuff, then yes, that would have been appropriate. We're doing their annual report review. So that's why we, the way that we have set it up is that we do not talk to schools today. That's why it's inappropriate. That's, that's what I mean by that. But I think if we had gotten notice or known for several months ago, we should have done this a long time ago and had the conver, done it, hey, come talk to us, why are you not doing this? What's going on? Let's get this fixed and move on. But we're just doing this so late. And, and to no forgiveness, that's actually just extra time the school had, to be fair. I'm, I am unhappy that the school does not have this done. I'm very unhappy with it. But I do know, also, I'm, in just general, I would like to stop sending letters and breaches out before we talk to school, before we hear their side, that's all.
Microphone, please. Microphone.
No one's talking yet.
Thank you.
So I, I hear your impassioned plea, Commissioner Burt. And I think what I'm going to start referring to these situations as is the bluebird defense. Yeah, you do. When Gino was, uh, Gino Zamora with Tierra and is the bird alive, or, remember when he, oh my God, it was. All right, well, I would refer to this as the bluebird defense. They've had ample time to do absolutely everything. And when you say this is not the venue, I don't, I don't, I'm actually under, maybe you're saying this is not the time, but this is the venue. Okay. And, but I think it's also the time. I think it's just time, time, time. I mean, it's, and I think it's so important, and I'll use the example, the first time the bluebird defense came to us, it was with La Tierra. And one of the challenges that we've had over the years, or since I, actually, we're all four years now, pretty much. But anyway, since I've been on this commission, is the dotting of the i's and crossing of the t's. So if we ever have to take more severe act, severe action, did we give them ample notice? Is there a paper trail? And that's why I think it's really necessary that, once again, I mean, you said, you want to give them another chance to say, it's ins, like, it's insufficient, but we didn't get the information. That in and of itself is the, is an insufficiency. Their inability to be able to give us the information we need in a timely fashion or that we're asking for, that is a deficiency as well. I would stress the wrong syllable there, but I'm sorry. And so anyway, I just, I'm thinking a letter of concern is, is good here. And I wouldn't doubt it if relatively soon, based on past performance, they're going to end up with a letter of breach, because they just can't seem to follow the rules.
Wow. Just thinking about. Is there any way we could, we could send a letter to the school saying we have a concern? Not a notice of concern, but that we have identified a concern, and that is the lack of response. Because we give them the notice of concern, if they're, they're going to come up here next month anyway on that. So that, and perhaps the agenda get noted next month. It's discussion of possible action, possible movement to the intervention ladder based on the response that the school gives. So we've given the school notice, they have, they're up, they're up here. We said, we've got this concern, they're already on the intervention ladder. And we've got the cap, but we acknowledge that there is a concern that we're identifying. Commissioner Brower?
I, I, I'm sorry, go, you.
I don't, yeah, I've lost that screen, so I can't see. But that's okay, sorry.
I, I, I like, I like that idea, Chair. I think for me, and I don't know if this is, I don't know if this is the right thing or my right, the right logic, but I just want, I just want this school to start seeing progress. And we could go, like, we all know what's going to happen. We still hear from families still, and I just want these families to just, like, I just want to find some health down there at the school for everyone involved. So I think if we go, I think, just playing this out, we all know exactly what's going to happen if we send another notice of something to this school. You're wrong. You're the problem. Like, you're not listening to us. And then we're doing nothing again. The school's doing, going to do nothing again because they're going to be spending the whole time putting their vitriol back at us. I know we all have big shoulders, we all can take it, okay? But we're also in the business of, like, seeing change for schools and children. And, and I, I'm, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of sick to my core to still hear families talking the way that they are and not figuring out a way to find their own health. And even with students who have moved on and they're in a different school, and they're finding it's a great fit, and we're still hearing, but you messed up, PEC, and this school is terrible, and we should burn it to the ground. That's a little bit of a paraphrase, but you understand what I'm saying. And I just feel like this is going to add just more and more fuel to the fire to come in with another letter. And I, we are entitled and we are able to do it, it's within our, it's within our control to do this. I just think if we're in a position that we want to see a different action and a, and a reaction from the school and the leader especially of the school, I just don't see it happening if we go into this again. It's going to be again, like, all the energy is going to be placed on, like, you guys are terrible, you guys are picking on us. We're going to bring my, our attorney up, where it's just like, and then what is going to happen in terms of the change? We all know. So we are in a rock, and we're stuck between a rock and a hard place, for sure. So I am really excited, Chair, about the idea of, like, maybe thinking a little bit creatively. And we have a concern. This is not another notch on the ladder of wherever it's going to lead. But we're able to, hopefully, try something that's a little bit different, to see if we get a different reaction. And if we get the same reaction, then we have the backup plan, and we still have options to do this next, next month. But if we really want to see change, I just think that we, we have to change our approach a little bit with that. And that it's, that's part of our values, part of our values.
Yeah, I just wanted to put this in, in what you all are talking about in the context of the rule. So you are sending out a letter to this school today, you know, and it won't go out today, but then, but the notice is going out, the letter's going out today. The rule anticipates that you can do a series of things. You can say a school's work on this over the next year. That is kind of the starting position. You may put someone on in the intervention ladder right now. And then you did already say in the last motion for this school that the uncorrected unsatisfactory performance, things that have gone on for two years now, are going to be added to that cap. So I think you have a range of options. And then I do want to flag for you that, first, good news, a lot of schools fixed it, fix, fixed it, fixed their uncorrect, their unsatisfactory performance from last year. So when I was going through that, it's working. There are several times you're going to see that you're going to hit this issue where you have uncorrected unsatisfactory performance. And actually, you'll see that it's blank each time because I wasn't sure what you want to do. So this conversation is the first in many, and it is within the rule. The rule doesn't dictate what you do. And you're hitting this one on no documentation. So you are sending out just a letter. So when the chair says, can we send out just a concern, that is exactly what you're doing under the rule.
I agree that we have to look at our timing process because they're supposed to report their conditions by, like, June 30th. So that needs to be on the, at the, not maybe an analysis of it, but it needs to be on the July agenda. Did they or didn't they? And then we, then there can be time and maybe the August agenda, those conditions can be looked at, cleared out maybe, or it, it may be one of those ongoing that, great job, report back to us next year. But we can't wait till January and say, hey, how come you didn't do that back June? You know, when this is something that we could have done in real time.
So, just briefly, and then I'll let it go. Okay. So just briefly, I, I, I feel like I appreciate, I appreciate Commissioner Brower's sensitivity to the fact that we do keep hearing from these families. And I think we're all distressed by that, you know, and we want resolution. We, we want resolution there. I don't, I, if, I, I'm okay with sending the letter as you suggested. I would, I would make sure that it is, is strongly worded in a way that we, this is what we expect. Because what message does it send to those families if we're like, okay, you got some more time, you know, we'll, 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 we'll work it out, whatever? I feel like we really need to stand up for those families as well in that community and let them know that we are concerned about this and we do want to take care of it. We do want to come to, to a, a resolution. So, so, yeah, that's where I'm, I, I am okay with the letter as long as it's, you know, strongly worded. I, I feel like, I, I hate the fact that it's been that long and we, you know, the, the, and so we're kind of dealing with something that should have been done six months ago, or like you, as you suggested, you know? But at the same time, I just feel like I don't want this administration, I want them on their toes. You know, I want them on their toes responding to the things they need to do to come to a resolution in that community of that school, so.
Okay. KT?
I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Taylor had mentioned. My thoughts on the matter are that we should send the, send, send a letter. We, we have to go based off the information that we have and the information that we have now. And we should, in my opinion, we should be doing that with all annual reports. That's why we have the take action. And I understand Commissioner Brower's standpoint as well. But I think we need to do right by these families and hold the school accountable as much as we, we can.
Commissioner Carrillo?
Echo both, appreciate what Commissioner Brower said. You know, I am recollecting that we said we would be doing this, that when we had the annual reports, it was, it wasn't going, and I'm remembering, and so I'm going to withdraw this idea of doing a letter of concern. But we said that after we received the annual report, we would send a more informal, I think was the word we used, say, hey, look, this red flag came up for us.
Say, hey, look, this red flag came up for us. To be kind of more gentle and invite them into the conversation, if you will, Commissioner Brower. The challenge I have, so that's what I would like to do and that's what Patty mentioned. And so the, I don't mind saying this. So the challenge I have is sometimes I get the impression, often I would say I get the impression, especially when they're up here, that they don't care, they're just thumbing their noses at us and they just couldn't care less. No? They're going to, they feel, I feel like they're just going to go on doing what they're doing. We can just send as many letters as we want to and, and we're going to keep getting the people on public forum that don't even realize sometimes that we don't have control over some of these things. You know, our charters are autonomous for a reason, for that we're not going to intervene in those things. And I understand, because we've been listening to the parents for a long time, I understand and feel for their concern. But it's not something we can intervene with. That really is a matter for the board and I know there are issues with the board, but we don't run boards. Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say, I'm listening to the impassioned public comment month after month is, is really, it's, it's tragic, okay? And they point out a lot of important things. I wish they would listen to the rest of the meeting and to hear that we are wrestling with this. I would bet that nobody that is, and, and I hope they will, they will challenge me on this next month. But I bet you none of them are listening to the debate we're having right now. And, and, and they don't recognize that we're agonizing over this. They keep coming back to us with, are they? Okay, well then, then they need to hear that we're agonizing over this. And when they make accusations like they made today, they need to recognize that we're not just ignoring this. We're acting in the most deliberate manner that we can act. And I, I, I agree, you know, that we should not kick the can down the road any longer than we have to, but we have to act deliberately and do what we're charged to do in a manner that we made reasonable. Okay, so for me, I would like to know what is the next, the next month is the next, and they, I want to affirm because Julia said they weren't on the, the intervention ladder. At least that's what I thought I heard. They are, okay. So what is the next step on the intervention ladder? Is that the letter of breach? And, and can we issue that next month if that's what needs to happen?
So they are on the intervention ladder and we've been getting reports. So currently, we are still waiting for the Office of Special Ed to close out what we asked them to look at so that we can, so that we can either close out, we have closed out some items on the cap. So we either close out additional items or the commission can make a determination about the insufficiency of items that are still open on the intervention ladder. And then this would be now they're going to report to. So this could, the commission could decide to allow the school to continue to report on it if that's the case. Or because they are on the intervention ladder, the commission could decide to issue a notice of breach based on that. So those, because they right now are at that notice of concern. So if we felt that there was still significant enough insufficiencies with the cap and their work on the cap, they could move to a, a notice of breach. They could, or we could close it all out and say, you're now back in good standing, depending on the information we get. So there's a multiple, there's multiple choices that we have with that. You can allow the school more time if you feel that they've made, they've shown genuine progress and you're confident and you could say, okay, we'll, you know, we'll get a report back in two months. Or you could say, nope, everything is good, what you gave us is satisfactory and we'll send you a notice that you're back in good standing. Or you could say, we're going to move to notice of breach.
Okay, but they, they won't be able to, they, what, what Mike and the rest have articulated, the fact that they were negligent in responding to this, the, the condition, that can't be cured. I mean, they can't come back and say that they, or, I mean, I, I know Rebecca, you're, you've mentioned some things that, well, what if, okay? But to me, that's unsolvable. The, the fact that they, they didn't respond is still, that they, they had an obligation to respond to those conditions and they did not do it. Whatever reason that has is, is, is maybe, it may have a, it may be pertinent, but it won't fix the fact that they didn't respond to the, to the condition in a timely matter. So that one, to me, also, almost puts them in the category where the next meeting, they have, how they can, I don't think they can cure that. Okay, sorry.
I think that's a fair point. I mean, you can't go backwards and, so the timeliness, you can't go backwards and fix, right? Like, when something's not timely, it's not timely, like, it happens. But what, what I, so, once again, I'm struggling with this because I actually think this is more about the cap than about annual reports, number one. So annual reports, I think we're doing the right thing with the letter, like, that process. Now, when we go to the cap, I am seeing it as differently because I do think this is actually like the cap not being fought kind of thing. So I do think you're right, but I also, I think because, I do think this is a cap issue that, that's where I think we have an obligation to, to have a communication with them about it, right? So, and, and like, like Chair Gibson said, July 1, I think we probably should have been like, hey, this isn't ready. What's going on? Talk to them at that point and we didn't do that. So I, that's why I don't like that it's like, so our timeliness, like, the school messed up? We also messed up. That's where I see, that's where my struggle is, is we, it's, we should have made more action sooner as well. And I, yeah, I don't know where it dropped off of the cap, I don't know where it like kind of got lost. But that, that's where, once again, like, if there's not clear communication, if we don't have the, the, the clear communication on our side, we're, they're not getting clear communication then. There's no way they are, you know, like if, if on their own. And we gave them a list of what, you know, 20, 30 things. So for them, this is one of many things that they have to do, right? We are seeing it as, that's the one thing you didn't do, right? And so we're gonna, that's it. We gave them an enormous list to have to follow and check off all the things. And if that's one thing that got dropped off the cap and hasn't been reported to us, that's on us is just as much as, so I feel like there's just like a little course correction that we can do and we can do it in a collegial way. But like I said, I, I actually fully support just having this letter say out like, hey, this should have happened, you did, they do know, they know. But once again, we gave them 20 things to do. They also have another 100 things that they're doing. This is one of many things on a list that this school has to do all the time. And for us, it's the biggest deal. For them, it's, they have to keep their doors open. Like he is struggling, like this school is struggling with facilities, they're struggling with, with personnel, they're struggling. Like, this is, I know for us, it feels massive. For them, it's one of many things for them. So I don't think it's that they don't care, it's that they are working through 100 things. They've made progress on, you know, 19 of the 20 things, but they're still missing, right? So I think we can still, and this is where Commissioner Brower, what he said of like, let's do this in a different way instead of just punt, like, you didn't do it, you're bad. Like, let's bring up, like, what's going on, like, where did this leave up? You, like, we need, this is important, this is important for us. And I do think having the conversation with us is what is the mechanism to do that. To have a convert, to bring them up, let's talk about it, figure out. And like, it's not a forgiveness, but it's like, let's get on the same page. Because I don't think, from our side either, I don't think we're on the same page. And that's what, that's where my kind of mindset's coming. But once again, I see this more as a cap issue for this topic than I do annual report. And so I think, I don't want to, I don't want to muddy the waters for the rest of annual reports with this scenario. And I'm trying to keep them separated.
Yeah, and I'm going to, and I'm speaking just about condition, okay? So we did drop the ball somewhere along the line with, with that because we should have known, we should have checked to see where, you know, yeah, it should have been in the cap. But we were kind of trying to keep those separate and obviously it didn't work. So we, you learn from your mistakes, hopefully everyone does, both sides, you know? So at the end of the day, I, you're absolutely right, can't cure, you were late, you know, you were late. But if a school comes up and they've actually can document that they fulfilled the condition, we'd be hard pressed to take further action on that with any standing and say, what are you doing? You're going to do this just because they were late? You know, I get it, they were late. But if they actually can document that they met the condition, at the end of the day, that's what we want them to do, is meet the condition. And yes, we also want them to report to us and to respond in a timely fashion. And that didn't happen. And I think it's really important to find out the why. You know, how come this didn't happen? Because the board should know, year three of a contract, we've got, you know, have we filed the condition document? You know, there should be checks that they have as well and say, how come this didn't happen? And that's, that's a conversation, the school, you know, you know, this is one of the ones that hopefully the school, the board learns from on what they have to add to, what conversations do we have to have? So that, you know, Missy always talks about calendars and, you know, so the board puts on the calendar, let's check in June on the condition submission. And it's, they learn, I hope, you know? It's unfortunate, I mean, they submitted late last year. Yes, absolutely, yeah, yeah. And, and, and EpiCenter can send reminders. So, you know, we, hopefully we'll get in a better cycle with that. But I don't think, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but this was not something that EpiCenter generated a reminder from, not yet. We're not at that point, correct?
We, we created a space for it in EpiCenter, I think there was one school who wasn't included in that. Oh, no, we created it for everyone and for the conditions they could hit NA.
Correct, but if they had a condition, there was no automatic generated reminder in beginning of June to say-
No, there was not.
The condition document is due by June 30th.
There was no automatic reminder.
I'm just double checking, so, okay.
So then to wrap this sucker up, we can just, we're sending a letter saying, hey, we're concerned. Right? And then we are going to call them up here for next month to just really give us a thorough update as to what's going on. Okay, cool. Is there a motion to that?
There is.
Okay.
So it's, I'm moving that the- Okay, so the annual report notice for, I guess that is, and that's why, why don't I do, I move. I move that the annual report notice for 22, 2022, 2023 school year indicated concerns with the reporting of the information on the condition and CSD has indicated that no condition compliance document was received. Therefore, the compliance with the condition is insufficient. The chair shall include the annual notice letter that the school must provide information on the condition compliance at the February meeting of the PEC. And this item may be subject to further action under the intervention ladder. I agree. There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson and a second by Commissioner Correo.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Correo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Mr. Klaasusilage?
Yes.
Mr. Burt?
Yes.
Mr. Manus? Mr. Manus?
Yes.
Mr. Brower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Obenshein?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are 10 votes, 4, 0 votes against, the motion passes.
Thank you. We are on, we are now on to C, Altura Preparatory School. To my right. Commissioner Beck?
Yes, I just want to point out like Commissioner Burt did on Albuquerque Collegiate Charter that these Vista scores are off the charts. I've witnessed that school on multiple occasions. And not only are they focused with their academics before, they do a lot of different art and different activities that keep the kids fully engaged. And some of the, the curriculum that they do is so creative in terms of how they do it. But if I was in second grade, I want to be there, so they're awesome.
I know we can't, we're not supposed to compare last year's Vistas with the year before with last year's. It did even improve, so that's great. Okay, are we ready? I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to Altura Preparatory School indicating a notice of exemplary performance.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gibson and a second by Commissioner Beck.
Commissioner Obenshein?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Mr. Burt?
Yes.
Mr. Klaasusilage?
Yes.
Mr. Ingham?
Yes.
Vice Chair Correo?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are 10 votes, 4, 0 votes against, the motion passes.
We are now on to D, which is Cottonwood Classical. Deputy Director?
Thank you, Chair Gibson and Commissioners. We have provided an explanation for why we were unable to rate the mission-specific goal, but it's complicated and if Commissioners have any questions, I can clarify. Suffice to say that it does not reflect a situation where students are not learning, we, but difficulties within the way the goal was written.
So is that something that the school, we should require the school to amend? Like, can we require the school amendment so that we can do it in the future? Because I saw your note that you've talked to the school about submitting.
And Mr. Benner-
Can we be like, you have to?
He plans to submit an amendment, but he's going to work with me to make sure that we get it right. And I'd actually like to talk to Commissioners when we break about the possibility of doing more than one goal because, because of grade level issues, he's having a very difficult time doing a single goal to select-
You don't even have to ask us after, you can do two goals.
Thank you.
Like, two goals is, is appropriate.
No, we, we do, we do need to discuss after, there's some, yeah.
We've been told no.
I-
They can do different goals within a goal, breakdown of grade levels. But it would, so wait a minute, the exception has been if it's a K-12.
Has to be one goal that covers all the students and then they can have a second goal that covers part of the students is what Julia Barnes has advised.
It's not been the guidance that's two years, you know, this is the second year. It's not been the guidance that's been given. It wasn't the guidance that was given last year. No, that they all had to be included, yes. The second goal didn't have to include all students, if you have a second goal.
Right. There's one overarching for the entire school. And then if they have different grade breakouts-
And then if they have different grade breakouts, they're able to do goals specific to those grade breakouts, right? And I believe that's what Mrs. Lee said.
So different tools to measure the same goal, right? That is age-appropriate, is the guidance that has been given.
Okay, I think this is an, off this subject topic, so let's move on at this point in time. Because it doesn't affect this right now, so. Sure.
I move that the PEC provide an annual report to Cottonwood Classical Preparatory School indicating a notice of exemplary performance and identify the unsatisfactory performance regarding 2C, 5, N5D on the annual report. The unsatisfactory performance should be corrected by the next annual report.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't know if you were done, sorry.
We're all falling asleep here.
So the only thing I'm going to say is that this is, the school directly focused their special project award to improving this. Cool, yeah.
All right, let's see, Chair, Commissioner Burt.
Yes.
Commissioner Manus.
Yes.
Commissioner Klaasus Sillage.
Yes.
Commissioner Brower.
Yes.
Mr. Obenshein.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Correa.
Yes.
Chair Gibson.
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are 10 votes for, oh, Commissioner Ingham, Commissioner Ingham.
Yes.
He stared me down. Secretary Beck, yes, there are now 10 votes, 4, 0 votes against, the motion passes.
Thank you. We are on to E, which is Explore Academy Los Cruces.
Have we done, is it, is it consistent for us to do the, that note about the proficiency being below the district and state? Is that something that we've included previously? Like, as a, like, kind of an automatic thing? Historically, how have we, is that something we've included?
You, you did in the first set of them and then you changed that, that you weren't comparing it to the district and state. So the answer is right now you have not been doing that, but you have been identifying, for example, if proficiency is low.
Right, got it, okay.
All right.
And the school also attached a reply, we're coming. Check them out. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking. Los Cruces.
So would it be appropriate here, like, to send, because I'm just looking at their math course? Would this be a case where we, or I'd like to send the school a letter just saying, hey? It's gonna be-
Hey, God.
Hey, we really want you to be able to do something other than work it in all steps. I wouldn't send that letter, but I'm just saying, just about working-
We don't have one in Los Cruces yet, but we're getting one.
You see that?
No.
We're concerned about your math proficiency scores, we just want to highlight that. No?
So if we're, if we're maintaining consistency-
You're right.
With what we've done, we, we would have to go back and look and make sure that we're doing it with the school that way. So overall, they've got, yeah, that's where, that's where you run into some concerns. I want to make sure it- They have unsatisfactory, they have uncorrected. They have uncorrected? No.
Does he, apparently he's on Zoom, does he want to be promoted?
We not, we tend to know that.
We haven't made a motion yet.
Not on track for renewal.
I hear what you're just, we- Because it seems like, Karen said they have an objection to this part of the indicator, so.
The only one, yeah, I'm just, because I want to make sure that we're-
On the record.
I want to make sure, correcting and making sure we're noting and doing something with the uncorrected.
All right, so I actually, this is very exciting for me. And this is going to be a little geeky, but this is like the first time that we're implementing the performance framework, the rule, the timing, and it's actually like coming to like boots on the ground now for the first time. So I'm, I'm kind of geeking out about it a little bit, so bear with me. But this is, this is the, like, our first year where we could have uncorrected, unsatisfactory performance with the school. So the whole point of us doing this is so that we can start having clearer communication with schools year over year, right? Instead of waiting for their renewal to have that communication. So my suggestion, like, I think the, the kind of idea of what we're, the, the vision of what that could look like, but I think can, there's lots of different ways to do it. But I think when we were looking at the rule and talking about, like, what does this look like? It really is, like, looking at that record of performance, but putting pressure on schools to make those adjustments. If it's, they get the letter the first time, if they didn't do it in a year, then yeah, we got to take the next step now. Like, we don't give, we don't go another year, we don't go more. Like, this is when we actually start doing the, all right, what's going on? Like, we got to get in there and see what's happening. I think for this school, seeing that uncorrected, unsatisfactory performance in their financials, I think that's one where I think it's appropriate to send a letter saying, you had uncorrected, unsatisfactory performance. I think we do need to have the school come to the PEC, talk to us about what their plan is, what are they doing about that, about that indicator, about that uncorrected performance? Give us their plan, what are they doing? If they have evidence to show that they've already made more progress on it, they can do that at that time. But if they come and they don't have sufficient, any plan, no progress, no anything happening, I think that's when we start making those decisions to start putting folks on intervention ladders. And that way, we're not getting to, two, three years down the road, this has been a problem. And now at renewal, now it's a huge problem, right? So I feel like this is where we actually get to start having that proactive communication. And I do think of it as that, that it's proactive communication, we're, we're providing clarity to the schools. We're also providing them the opportunity, like, now that they, they know that they have time to, like, figure out what they're going to come and talk to us about, about this thing, and then like determine what that looks like after that, at that point. So I don't know if this is going to be like every January, and then February's just full of, you know, uncorrected, unsatisfactory performance reviews kind of thing, but it could end up being like part of the cycle that we end up going through of, you know, that's, that's part of the process. Like, once you get that unsatisfactory, uncorrected, unsatisfactory, that means in two years in a row, you've had the same issue. We gave schools two years to fix it on their own, now you got to come talk to us. And I feel like that's super appropriate.
So, all right. There's someone that's on Zoom that texted me that they thought they were not allowed to speak on any of this.
They're not today.
Then my question is, okay, if, then why not? And I just, you know?
So the reason why we chose that, and this is part of the, like, part of that rule process, it came up 100%. You're not crazy for being like, why are we doing this? But it's because we saw that if schools came up today, it would just be more infighting of them, like, just arguing against CSD, right? And so we're not doing that. That's not what our, that's not the purpose of an annual report, is for them to come argue what CSD wrote about them. So that's why we do not allow for schools to comment. They can write in their comments and we're able to review them, but-
How do we clarify that they can't?
In the rule.
That when we-
When we review their annual reports, that they can do a written submission. They're allowed to do written submissions that we review. So anything they would come say, they can write to us and we can review. But I do think this, there's, if we give them the letter of whatever it looks like, that just goes into their record, there's no, like, they just need to fix their stuff. It's only when we, we're going to, like, take action, adverse action, and that's why I think we need to give, that's when we need to have them come talk to us, give them their, like, they can talk to us and give us more context. But only if we need to move towards further action with them to begin with.
I understand what you're saying. But as a body that has constituents that want to be able to address us about whatever concern they may have, whatever it may be. I mean, the idea of us telling, to me anyway, the idea of us telling them no, if they want to come here, for instance, they know we're going over this and they, and they say, you know what, this, this thing irked me, I just want to be able to let them know why.
They can.
They could do public comment as well. And they're welcome to do public comment, reach out to anybody outside of the meeting. But yeah, I think public comment's an appropriate form for that. If they're upset about the process or they want to make a comment on a specific school in an annual report, there's public comments available, two minutes to anybody who wants it anytime. But also the schools do get full reign to have as much of written that we can read as possible. I mean, they should not be leaving anything on the table that they would come say. They should be writing it out to us so that we can review as well.
This is the CSD report. We don't have input to that report. We don't have capacity to change that report. So if a school came now at this very moment, it would, it would truly be a, you were wrong, I want the rating changed. And that's, we don't engage in that conversation with the Charter School Division on a report that they are responsible for. The school had numerous opportunities in the process to go back and forth with the Charter School Division about, I've got different data and there are changes that occur without us seeing it. And then at some point in time, it has to become final. There's a, there's a, there's a time when you can't go back and forth any longer. The Charter School Division makes their best determination. If the school feels that it's still not correct, they then have the opportunity to put that as a record of their performance, as Sam helped us with. Put that in there, we get to read it, but that's still, we don't change that report. We identify concerns and that conversation is better had at a separate time so we're dealing with just that individual concern as opposed to, now let's open up the whole annual report when we don't, it's not our report and we don't have any capacity to change it. So-
Please know that I really do understand-
I know, but-
What you're saying, I'm not-
But you keep asking-
Well, because I ask these things because to me, anytime we're excluding someone's ability to come to us and comment, that just doesn't feel right to me as a public deliberative body, that-
They have public comment.
Well, public, they have public comment, but also if they're on the agenda, for instance, I mean, any school that's on here, Paco Cyber Academy, I mean, they're not here, but they're cyber, so that's, it's probably online. But if, but if somebody wanted to come and just say, I'm concerned about this particular finding or whatever.
That's not our place. It's not our place to engage in that conversation.
It's their place.
They have.
I believe this-
In the written comments.
I believe it's their place to be able to come to us.
I hear you. We've established this process and this is exactly what we did last year, exactly. You know?
Okay.
Commissioner Obenshein.
So just for my own clarity, when, for example, let's take this one, that's right in front of us, a school does respond, then our responsibility is to take that into account and then determine what action we will take based on the report and their response. So, for example, in this one, the motion, potentially, if I were to give a motion, I would take into consideration their concern about the playground facility issue, right? That that was brought up and it's unsatisfactory according to whatever the CSD provided. If I agree with the school's response, then I would make a motion that would not include, okay. All right, so I just wanted to be clear about that, thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that Commissioner Obenshein knows that, and I think you experienced, that there is lots of back and forth between the CSD and the school. Before we get to the point where these reports are presented to you, we give them an opportunity to be really specific about each indicator and why it might be different and to provide evidence. And, and we do make changes when there is evidence.
I've already said that. So I said that before, so, but I want to acknowledge that, so I did have, so, without engaging in, I don't need the school to, because I know what the school has identified. I have a, I did have a question as to, because I know we have a lot of schools that are in strip malls, or some, and they just have parking lot. So I, I was unaware, and maybe it's me, but I was unaware that we rated, I thought maybe Palms would go in if they identified a concern, or maybe Nipsey, if that's what they do. But I was unaware that through these, because this is honestly, I believe, the first time I've ever seen identified in a report something about a, a safety issue with a playground. And I did not know that that's something that we rated. And that was my only concern. Because I do, I do recall a school that we closed that had enormous safety issues and it's like, holy cow, how is anyone out there? And it was never identified in a report. So now, this is here, so I, I had that, I had that question.
So the Charter Schools Division gets a lot of complaints, some of which we can do nothing about because it's a personnel issue and some of it which we can take to the school and, and/or the appropriate entities to do a little bit more of a dive, deeper dive into it, if you will. This was an issue that was noted, I think- This was an issue that was noted, I think, called to our attention, and we called it to the school's attention, and we felt like it was, it was serious enough that it would rise to the level of bringing into this report, and it, and, and we, we're following the rubric, right? And we're concerned about student safety, so that's where 5A comes in.
So here's my question. A parent calls and complains that I don't like the playground my kid is in. I mean, I, I, I understand the, the concern and the complaint that a parent might have, you know? Because honestly, I've, you know, this school is a facility that had been an adult tech, you know, that had closed, so it's not a facility, and they're, they actually came up with, to us, with a big plan for the expansion of a playground and, and all of that. I did not, it was not my understanding that if a parent called and made a complaint, that would get generated into the annual report, and if there, if there was a concern, I, I acknowledge it. I don't know what the expectation is when you're looking at probably, Commissioner Ingham, tens of thousands of dollars to mediate a playground, what the expectation is for that to be fixed, and, and what kind of timeframe, when the, when the concern comes out. That's what, I'm just, I'm just concerned that we could be sending out a notice on an issue that we don't actually weigh in on. That it, only if we got a, a notice from an official entity like Palms and said, children should not be, should not be there, you know?
Chair Gibson, the Las Cruces Fire Department was called.
For the playground?
Can you see?
Not for the playground.
Oh, I see, you, you're, you're wanting to separate out the playground with the safety of the doors?
Well, and I see the fire department also, my understanding is the fire department also issued a no concern, so that's where, that's where I don't understand. So if, if, if we're identifying a concern, a fire concern, if you went into a building and you said, we couldn't get out of that, no one could get out of that building, okay, then, I got it, notify a concern. But if someone's going around a building and saying, oh, there's a deadbolt there, or, you know, something, but the fire department, as the official entity, has not noted, to me, when you're looking at any health and safety issue like that, the fire department, fire marshal, Palms, Nipsey, they, they generate a concern, and then we note that, but I have a concern over allergists, because I don't know, because if a parent hasn't issued a complaint at another school, but it's the exact same condition, what are we doing? You know? So, I, because that was, that was next on my list, because it does raise, to my level of, I, I think we're, I think we're weighing in, in areas that only an expert should be weighing in on. Commissioner Burton, then Commissioner Ingham.
Yeah, that was, that was where I was gonna go, is, I, I, I didn't, I couldn't tell for sure if it was only CSD that was like reviewing these things, but, so I was, I, I was, I, I don't, I almost don't wanna say this because I don't wanna come across as catty, but who's an expert on CSD and these things to make the deter, like, where'd you find that part, that, you know, I mean, it is, it is, it feels a little off, and I do, I would expect too, that, that, if, if there's a serious enough concern, that CSD could report that to the appropriate organization that would go out and do that in the future. You don't have to answer that, because I, now that I know it was CSD, that's, I do think that's where I stand as well. Like, when there's a level, something that goes to concern, I do think the CSD should move that on to an expert in the future. But the other thing I will say is that because of that does not meet on facilities, that triggered a does not meet overall, and so I would, I would be supportive of sending a satisfactory letter of notice, but then, do, indicating just those finance, the uncorrected, unsatisfactory financial concerns, but doing a satisfactory overall, because that does change the rating overall of the school.
So, so is it, is it, is it a meets, or is it a working to meet?
Did you have, well, Commissioner Ingham, Commissioner-
There's two issues with-
Commissioner Brower.
And it wasn't solved.
I fully agree that CSD shouldn't be doing an evaluation of a playground. I don't know who, so if there was a complaint made, then who does call Palms and make sure they go out there? That's my only concern, is there are playgrounds, as we've witnessed, that were a hazard, and, and I, I do feel like, if CSD even, if you have a, a concern, then maybe it is appropriate to call Palms, but it seems like the school, if, do they get the complaint? Somebody's got, somebody's gotta trigger that, that call to Palms to have an inspection done. And I'm gonna say though, that almost every inspection of a playground's gonna find a bunch of issues, no matter, I, I mean, I built playgrounds at APS and spent upwards to a million dollars on a playground, and still had failing audit. Okay, so the reality is, is that's a, that's a really tough nut to crack, but we need to find is a, if there is a significant concern articulated by a constituent, that needs to somehow trigger that, that inspection, and I don't know how that is. I know how that goes in the districts, but I don't know how it goes with the charter school.
Well, generally, what happens when a, when a parent calls in a complaint, they should be directed to file a complaint with the appropriate area. That, the parent should be the one filing a complaint, not, it shouldn't be us. It really should be, that parent should be doing it themselves, like, that's what the direction should have been.
So, Commissioners, I, I have the report right there, because there are two issues. It's not just the playground, it is the locks. So I just wanna make sure-
You understand that, but there was also, the fire marshal came out and found no concern. So, to me, it's the fire marshal's report that we accept, not someone who's not a fire marshal, determination that there's a safety concern. You know, I fully understand that if, if there's a ADA ramp, and it's completely inaccessible, then I think a novice can say, hey, you know what, no, that, you can't access that ramp, but maybe, but I will also think there's an, an appropriate entity that would also acknowledge that. But for us to say, you've got a fire issue, and the fire marshal say, no, you don't have a, a safety concern, that's where, how do we override the expert in the field with that? That's, you know, but I do agree, it's, it shouldn't be us, but Commissioner Burton is correct, it should be, when, if a parent calls and complains about a safety concern, who's ever handling that here should say, here's the phone number of Palms and Associates, you can address this with them. I'm sorry, Commissioner Openchain.
Yeah, so I guess for me, the, the bigger question is, with regard to the annual reports that we've already accepted, what happens with the school's response with regard to CSD's final report? So, with this, I'm, I was responding, and I haven't gone down to the school and looked at the doors or whatever, which I would never do, but it seems to me that they responded to all of the concerns, the financial as well. They didn't say specifically what actions have been taken to address audit findings so and so, but they did say, they've changed business managers, they anticipate that this issue will be resolved, because they had the audit findings, and the schools that I've worked at, when we get an audit finding, we address it immediately, we have to provide a response to the auditor saying, this is how we plan to address it. Does that mean that they've addressed it, or does that mean, no, because it's just their response that it's still outstanding?
So I think with the audit finding, different than most of the others, because the audit finding, we rely on the actual audit, so we'll look at, when we get the audit findings in February, we will look and see. So that's where the determination would be, they've corrected it. So that's different than many of the other areas, because we actually have that expert, you know, the auditor has come in and said, yes, they've got a repeat finding, no, they don't. So that kinda sits by itself, but the rest, that's where the, the concern is. You know, we haven't had any other, at this point, noted, uncorrected, unsatisfactory, that fell into this area where we haven't had, there should be an, another outside entity providing that information.
So, to follow up then, if, if, that would mean that any financial issue that was identified based on an audit, we shouldn't expect any response from them until the next audit comes out, because they can't respond to it.
Well, if they want to, they, they can-
But it won't, but it won't change our designation.
Until the next audit comes out, yeah.
Right, so, and what we're saying is, regardless of your response, any audit finding puts you in this category, so if, if I were receiving that letter, I'd say, okay, well, then we're not gonna, we're doing stuff, because we had to, to the audit, but we're not gonna respond to this from the PEC, because it's not relevant until the next audit comes out.
Yeah, because they can't show us that they actually corrected it until the audit comes out.
That's, I guess that's my quote, so-
Yeah.
Then what is the, what is the, right, what is the purpose of their audit, their response to the auditor, then if, because I remember, I mean, that was a big thing for us, was, oh yeah, we have to demonstrate on our response to the audit, that we've taken these specific steps to address this finding, not, well, wait till next year to see if we fixed it.
So, I, I'm gonna say, schools that get, so when the audit comes out, in addition, schools get additional letters that address the audit findings, and in that let, in that response, they simply have to show us the plan that they're taking, you know, and oftentimes, because they've done it detailed to the auditor, that is sufficient. They just have to say, this is our plan. Sometimes, the plan, the response of the auditor is way insufficient, so it's like, no, we need to, no, you know, you know, just saying, oh, we're creating new processes, you know, does that really fix it? But, so, there is, we deal with audits at a later time, and with separate communication, where the school is required to show us the plan, and then, the following year, we clear it out with the audit.
I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I, I would say, in the same vein, or the same way, are we relying on the experts of playgrounds, the same way, and fire facilities, fire code, the same way we are auditors, and, well, but, it, it sounds similar, that if they say, we're putting processes in place, and we say, no, that's not sufficient, are we now acting as the experts in the auditing space?
No, we're not clearing them out of, we're simply, we asked them to provide us the plan, but we don't clear out that, we don't clear it out, and we don't clear out the, the school's, that concern until we get the next audit finding, and then we clear it out. Only based on, do we clear it out only based on the auditor? But we would like to see, we'd like to have the conversation with the school to see, you know, are you really doing something about this? But, but otherwise, we do not clear that concern out until we get the following audit, yeah. Julia? Oh, I'm sorry, Alan, did you, you had your end up?
I just had one, a, a, with this one thought, like, I, my, my original thought was satisfied, because I was thinking about, when we were really focusing in on the, the merry-go-round, at, on the asphalt, I don't know what it is, that's what I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about Commissioner Ingham putting in like these metal merry-go-rounds for everyone to get hurt on, I, those were for just Gen Xers, I mean, that's, that was good enough for me, but, you know, so I feel satisfied with like the other, the fire marshal coming out, and obviously being the expert. My concern, and maybe this isn't a top-line concern, but I was just whispering to Commissioner Burton, that since we have a threshold in our performance framework, of like, if you get a certain amount of do not meet, that, that matters, and so this one, right now, is at a threshold of three do not meets, and I believe that means something in terms of you being in danger or something. So, when I put my empathy hat on and think about the school, that, I would, if I was in their situation, and I have been, I would fight tooth and nail on getting that sucker changed, like, because that, that's now on the record, and I know we've already talked about, we don't change it, but I think for us, it's on, it's now going to be basically in stone, and we're gonna, we're gonna not, not put it, to your point, Commissioner, we're not gonna put the facilities as an issue of concern, but it's still, it's still a big old red flag in there. And, and for me, like, I don't know if that's necessarily aligned to, to what we hope for this, and, and yes, they will have a chance, Chair Gibson and others, you have shared, they, they'll have a chance to change this in the next round, but it's still there, you know, and like, and I can see, like, our schools who are on that threshold, that could be, that could be something of like, that, that's a concern to me. And so, if they've corrected it, I do wonder how we can say, give credit where credit's due, and we're having a good conversation about it, and we're, they're getting credit by the word that we're saying, but it's still a red on there, and it's, and it meets that threshold that's really important. So I'm, I'm just wondering how we, how we like, correct that, or make sure schools feel as, like, like comfortable and clear, aware, that this is something that we're giving credit for, but it's still, still a red on our framework.
Okay, so I, that's such a fair, valid point, so thank you for bringing it up. I think in my head, when I was looking at it, and then like how Commissioner Obenchain said, well, let's just leave it off of the, you know, like, I get it, I wonder, because that letter is part of the record of performance, all of this is part of the record of performance, right? And I do know, like, what, how I see it, for myself, is, I'm gonna look at things with context, right? So like, when that school comes to renew, I'll, when I review this annual report, I'll be like, okay, yeah, I, I saw they got the overall does not meet, but I remember the same, and I can like, remember the context behind it and be able to make a decision with additional context, right? Which is what they're written, like, being able to allow them to write, that's the, that's literally the whole purpose, right? I don't wanna get in a space of changing CSD's reports, ever, right? Like, I, I don't wanna get into that space. What I want, what I'm wondering is if, to your point, because I do think that's incredibly fair, I wonder if we can, on our letter to them, include that we are not concerned by that indicator and by the overall does not meet, that way, they also have it in their record of performance, right? Of saying, the PEC said they are not going to be concerned by these things at renewal time, basically, right? Like, that we're telling them, we've, we've considered the context, and, you know, we are, we have this concern, this concern, these, these other items, the PEC's determining that we are not of concern of these items, and have it written, and, and that way, it does give them that, like, okay, like, we see it's red, they see it's red, if other commissioners change by the time they get renewed, right? Like, if half of us are gone, and there's new commissioners at their renewal time, they'll be able to read that as well, right? Like, it, it follows with the school in their record of performance. And I'm wondering if that's a, a good, like, kinda compromise, where it's respecting the process and what CSD's doing, and also respecting the, the context and, and the purpose of why we're, we do the back and forth with us as well, and being able to have like a balance between them.
So here's my fairness lens, and I hear it, but what if we had expedited renewal? And everything else was, because they only have three other yellows, and let's say those yellows were all green, but they still had those three red, they would not qualify for expedited renewal. So that's where I run into the-
When we, we haven't determined expedited renewal.
I know.
We can, we can think about this in advance, because if we're gonna write into our letters that these items will not be, you know, of-
So maybe we could include that in-
Yeah, but this, this will keep you on track for expedited renewal, you know, like, like, the, the commission- You know, like, like the, the commission sees it as you are still on track for that. And we can make it...
That's the only thing that worries me. You know, I'm fine with the letter, changing the letter, identifying no concern, great, but I don't want this as low hanging fruit if later on, there's, you know, there could be a big consequence. Did you have your hand up? No.
I just wanted to go back to the record of performance, which is in the rule, and kind of confirm what you, you all are saying. And I think that what you just proposed is consistent with that. The record of performance lets there be what CSD says. If a school is concerned with something, then they get to put that in the record. It's in, that's in the record. Then your annual notice is, in my view, should correctly outline, as you were just saying, what you intend. And so I think this follows that. CSD knows that the school's been upset about that. The school indicated in writing that they were upset about that. You're considering it and you're being clear here. So I think that's consistent. The second thing I wanted to raise, and I'm not sure if Commissioner, Commissioner Obenchain was raising it or not, but they have uncorrected, unsatisfactory performance on accounting principles, but not on the audit finding. So maybe you do bring them forward next month to talk about whether their audit response is taking care of their accounting principles or not. And maybe that's the way to do it. You can consider it next month. But, you know, I already have in my mind, we should have some kind of a chart of what you're going to do with uncorrected, unsatisfactory performance. So that's just my thoughts within rolling out the rule.
Yeah. Because it is a struggle trying not to change this. Commissioner Obenchain?
Well, and I hate, hate to muddy the waters anymore, but it seems, I'm, I'm not, I'm not necessarily in agreement with not messing with the reports. In the sense that if we right now, as a, as a body, agree, and I've heard pretty, pretty much consensus, that we're not fire marshals, we're not playground experts, would we, after seeing this, say, I don't agree with that rating based on their response? Therefore, I believe, as a commissioner, that they should not be penalized with that red mark on their report. I, right now, would say, I agree that they should not be penalized because of their playground and their fire egress. So that's, so in, in the bigger picture, I'm wondering, is where does, or does that happen? So I remember having conversations and sending letters to this body as a director, saying, we completely disagree with this. There was never any indication that would be, we would be judged or rated on our playground or our locks on our doors. So I, and that for me was the issue about what is on record. So I never got a satisfactory response from my concern as a director because I said, that is not right. That rating is not right based on the information that I am providing to you. This, I, if I were this director right here, I would say the same thing. And why didn't you change it? Why is that still part of the record when I indicated to you, there was no fire violation from the fire marshal, and there was no, there is no, I don't know what it's, what was it? What's the?
The locks.
No, no, the...
The playground...
And I have never been told that the Consumer Product Safety Commission will be coming out to review all of my playgrounds. If that is now a new requirement, then I need to know that, and I need to then be able to respond appropriately. Either I'm going to put rubber down on my asphalt or not, and then I'm going to live with consequences. So I know it's a bigger conversation, but I'm just, it's, that was the issue for me about what's on record.
I echo Commissioner Obenchain's concern. And I'm wanting to move on from this issue, and I'm thinking that the motion, as it's written, it doesn't, well, there's two things. One, I agree, I would not want anything like this to get in the way of a school getting an expedited renewal. And so, I mean, that, I, because, you're right. And, but it would seem as though we could have a motion here because, where there not being, as long, unless the language was changed, says the unsatisfactory performance, that we're not taking, that we're, we're not holding the facility against them. That's what, that's how I read this. We're not holding it against them in the motion. And then, and then, and then I think the bigger issue to look at is exactly what Commissioner Obenchain was speaking to.
My only thought on what you have said, because I, I hear it, you know, and not trying to change the system that we have in place, wanting to honor what schools are doing. My only thought is, because we've already accepted the report. So we could take, we could, right now, we could rescind that. And we, this is my only, you know, I'm throwing the pasta on the wall right now, is to say, we rescind the accept and, and ask CSD to take a look and have a conversation with the school, and we move this to February to see if there's been any change. And then we deal with it if there is not. I think that's the only thing, to me, that we're still honoring the relationship between CSD and the school and fixing this and us. I don't want us to start getting in and saying, I want this changed. You know, that's where I don't want to get into that. And I don't think we want to get into that. But to me, that's the only cure right now for it, is to make a motion to rescind the exception, the acceptance of Explore Las Cruces and asking sort of School Division and the school to meet and come to, see if they can come to some compromise, whatever, with this. And then we don't have to worry about all the wording of this motion right now, and we put it off to February.
Yeah, and the only thing I would, I would say is that I wasn't intending to, to throw this all under the bus. But I do, I'm wondering if we don't necessarily have to do that, and we can still send a letter of concern because of the financials, but just ignore the other one. Then we can come back, later, at a later time, talk about how do we deal with annual reports that we feel may not have been adjusted based on the school feedback?
But I think we want to find a cure for this school right now, you know?
But the school, but wouldn't the, sending the letter with just that one designation address the school?
No, we, it still sits in their annual report without, we can't change the annual report. We can't. The only way we can, the only thing we can do is ask for the school and CSD to see if there can be a reconsideration. The letter, we said we may not consider it an issue, but it still stands in the annual report, you know, which is public record. So if we want to do the real cure for it, to me, the only way we can do that is to rescind and then work on it in February. I think that's the fairest at this point in time.
So my, my, my only concern is that the process worked the way you said. CSD said something, the school said something. It's not like there's new information today. They just disagree. I think, I, I think what would stop any school from ever saying, CSD said this and I disagree. Because every school down here that submitted a, a letter disagrees. So therefore, I don't want to set a precedent that you're going to rescind every report just because someone said I disagree. Now, I do think, maybe alternatively, that you could send the overall notice and say, PEC is asking CSD to look at whether they will be filing an amended letter. You know, because I can tell you that every single school is going to say exactly what Commissioner Obenchain has said.
Yeah.
They're wrong, I'm right. I mean, in fact, one school has redone that, I think we should have gotten this. So I want you to set the precedent the way you want. And to me, I mean, I do want to say, back to what Commissioner Obenchain is saying and others have said, you are starting to set some standards. The fire marshal is the final report, OSCE is the final report. So that is a, that is better information for CSD to make a decision. And that's an improvement on our process as we're working through this. But that's my thought, is that you do it, and you ask them to reconsider, and they let you know if they do or not.
Yeah, I mean, that's fair. And that's why we do what we do. We get to here. Sometimes it's a bumpy road, but it's... Commissioner Brower?
Just, just...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We will, so this letter will say that we accept the report, right? And, and so like, I, I guess I'm struggling with like, I'm not a words, I'm not a, a word mechanic here by any means, but I'm just trying to think about, we accept the report, but we know it's something...
It's a possibility.
And so we, for, so that means we'll have to probably...
Right.
Re-accept something, an amended one later on. Okay, so we can accept the report, and then we'll amend it later.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Are we good with that?
You want to add on the finding of the fire? Or just related to just facilities and the overall rating?
That, is this right? I'm sorry. Yeah?
It's just five. Well, are you looking at it? And therefore, the overall rating.
Right, of the organization, yeah.
Okay, I think you're right.
Are we good? Okay. I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to Explore Academy Las Cruces, indicating a notice of satisfactory performance and identify the uncorrected, unsatisfactory performance related to 2B accounting principles. The, the school shall be placed on the PEC agenda for February to discuss how they will remedy the uncorrected, unsatisfactory performance, and the PEC may take action under the intervention letter. And unsatisfactory performance related to 2C responsiveness to audit finding. The unsatisfactory performance should be corrected by the next annual report. The PEC asks CSD to look to see if the CSD report should be amended related to 5A facilities and the overall rating of the organizational framework. There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, a second by Commissioner Carrillo. Roll, please.
Commissioner Ingham.
Yes.
I didn't forget you this time. Commissioner Kloszusilich.
Yes.
Commissioner Burt. She's just stepped out, she said yes. Commissioner Manus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brower.
Yes.
Commissioner Obenchain.
Yes.
Chair Gibson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Carrillo.
Yes.
There are eight votes for, zero votes against. The motion passes.
Thank you. We are on to F, Explore Academy Rio Rancho.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Chair. Hello. Okay. Um, I'm going to have to sign off for an appointment, but I wanted to mention that I signed up for, in February and March, for all the days available for the negotiating with schools. And I would like to withdraw my name because I, I didn't realize that's what it was for. And I don't feel comfortable at this point to be able to do that. So if you would withdraw my name, I'd appreciate it, but I'm available if you need a body there.
Okay. Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Okay.
Explore Academy Rio Rancho. I'm, I'm going to say, for a brand new school to have this many greens, that's really good. I mean, it, it really is. No, it's Rio Rancho. Yeah. You ready for motion? I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to Explore Academy Rio Rancho, indicating a notice of satisfactory performance. There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, a second by Commissioner Obenchain. Roll, please.
Commissioner Obenchain.
Yes.
Commissioner Brower.
Yes.
Commissioner Manus.
Yes.
Commissioner Kloszusilich.
She's, she's gone.
I know.
Sometimes I say she's no longer with us, and it doesn't sound...
We don't want to say that. Commissioner Ingham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Carrillo.
Yes.
Chair Gibson.
Yes.
I gotta make sure we have six. Okay. Secretary Beck. Yes, there are seven votes for, zero votes against. Motion passes. We're talking about you.
We are on to G, Horizon Academy West. So I'm on the roll, I'm looking at one report and looking at... Okay. Commissioner Burt.
I, I would, I would say I would support a satisfactory just because of the mission specific goal performance of this school. If that was better, I actually would support an exemplary for this school, but because the mission specific is lacking, I would be satisfactory and then, yeah, be happy to make a motion.
So I just have a question about that. Because when I look at the mission and educational program, they have a Greenford meets the standard. That's what I don't, so that's where I was confused when I looked at the, you know, Deputy Director.
Thank you, Chair Gibson. Indicator 1A, mission and educational program is different from the mission specific goals. And, yeah, so they are implementing their mission. They just missed, they were working to meet on their mission specific goals. I would recommend an exemplary, given their spotlight and their proficiencies and...
Yeah, I'm, I'm almost in Commissioner Burt's camp. I'm, satisfactory's fine. Satisfactory's fine, and get him a, a... Satisfactory's fine, and get him a 25 out of 100 on the mission goal. One thing I want to point out, though, with that, is I like various mission goals. I love that, that's great. You know, a, and, uh, I, I think that, I think that's great. It's, but, uh, I agree that if it's working to meet standard, um, I, I would, I would be in the camp of satisfactory. By certainly here, uh, um, uh, Dr. Russell for sure, and her point. So what is it they're being slightly deemed for?
And I would say, if it wasn't the missions, like, if it was a yellow and maybe a different indicator, I wouldn't. But because it's the mission-specific, I, I do put a lot more value on that.
And satisfactory's.
Academic, yeah.
Satisfactory's fine.
And I, yeah, I would just love to see them bump up on that.
Yeah.
But they are very close, they're very close to meeting it. And I don't know if, like, I, I totally understand where Dr. Russell's coming from, because they're, they are close to meeting it, and the 0 through 100 makes a 25 look really bad. But also, it's, it is an antiquated system. Um, they were 3% off from meeting, which they would have gotten 75 points out of.
One of our values is consistency.
True.
One of our values is consistency, and we got to be consistent. And Firewood.
I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to Horizon Academy West, indicating a notice of satisfactory performance and working to meet the standard on the mission-specific goal, and identify the unsatisfactory performance. That doesn't, it didn't.
Just a second.
Where's what?
Echo, no, she knows everything. Where's Horizon Academy West? Where is Totos Santos Northwest?
That, that's right.
Oh, there you go.
Now we know where it, okay.
Okay, I'm fine, I got it. Okay, thank you.
I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to Horizon Academy West, indicating a notice of satisfactory performance and working to meet the standard on the mission goal. It doesn't show it, that's why. It doesn't, it's not, I'm in real time and it's not showing up. Got you. It didn't show up on my. It did now, but it didn't when Julia did it. Okay, I'm starting over again, again. I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to Horizon Academy West, indicating a notice of satisfactory performance and identify the unsatisfactory performance related to working to meet the standard on the mission goal, mission-specific goal, identify the unsatisfactory. This just moved to get on me.
Okay. My internet was off, that's why you couldn't see it. I just put my internet on, now it's messed up again.
So it should be identify the unsatisfactory performance related to working to meet the standard on the mission-specific goal, and 5B accounting principles on page 10 of the annual report. The unsatisfactory performance should be corrected by the next annual report.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gibson, a second by Commissioner Burke.
Vice Chair Carrillo.
Yes.
Chair Gibson.
Yes.
Commissioner Obenshane.
Yes.
Commissioner Brower.
Yes.
Commissioner Manus.
Yes.
Commissioner Burke.
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham.
Yes.
And Secretary Beck, yes. There are eight votes for, zero votes against. The motion passes.
We're on to item H, which is Hozzo Academy.
I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to Hozzo Academy indicating a notice of satisfactory performance, and identify the unsatisfactory performance related to 3C staff credentials and 5B accounting principles, found on page 10 of the annual report. The unsatisfactory performance should be corrected by the next annual report.
Sorry. Um, where are we going to start? Commissioner Burke.
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Ingham.
Yes.
Commissioner Manus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brower.
Yes.
Commissioner Obenshane.
Yes.
Vice Chair Carrillo.
Yes.
Chair Gibson. Secretary Beck, yes. There are eight votes for, zero votes against. The motion passes.
We're on to IJ Paul Taylor Academy.
Excuse me, this is the reporter. I did not hear the second on the last motion regarding Hozzo.
You could not hear the second on the last.
The second was Commissioner Obenshane.
Commissioner Obenshane.
Thank you.
They had an uncorrected unsatisfactory from last, from last week. Yeah. Because they fixed it. They weren't on the intervention ladder with it, so we don't have to, right. But we do have to note the uncorrected unsatisfactory. That, we do, but I don't think we need to put everyone who cleared because it wasn't a formal letter of concern. It'll, it's on the chart. We ready?
I, I just want to raise one thing for you to consider that I didn't know how to address. The annual reports have indicated that there's no growth data, but then they've also said, they, this is equivalent to one year's growth or whatever, it gave you some information on growth. Last year on this school, um, you indicated a concern with English language scores for Black students, and there wasn't, that, that information was math. So you can, what, you, I, I was thinking you should address it. I'm not sure how you want to address it, but one of them, one of the ways would be to somehow get information to CSD so that they could unmask that data or something, so the, whatever, the bottom, well, they can provide you information, I think, on students. We're not asking to unmask Vista data, but I don't know how you want to do it, I just am raising it.
I wonder if, I wonder if it's that we can ask that the information be provided to CSD, or C, I mean, they don't need it from the school, CSD can just talk to the accountability folks and get it from them. But then they just let us know, yes, the school improved, or no, we're still concerned. And not give any, we, I don't think we can get numbers, we can't get anything, but I do think we can take a recommendation from them as to, yes, the school did improve in this area, or no, the school has not made, like, or the, the school has, is, is, it still is an area of concern for the school. And then, but without, because we, we cannot, we cannot put ourselves in the situation where we're unmasking the student's data publicly in any way. Maybe we can, uh, we can just, yeah, we could, we could make that request.
We could just, yeah, instead of the school providing it, CSD.
Yeah.
Check with accountability and indicate to us whether there is still an ongoing concern.
Is that ELA scores or English learner progress? Sorry? ELA scores?
ELA.
Philosopher? Are we doing Greek today?
I think I'm doing Greek.
I heard philosopher, I was like. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I like.
Yeah. Okay. I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to J. Paul Taylor Academy, indicating a notice of satisfactory performance and identify the uncorrected unsatisfactory performance related to 2B accounting principles. The school shall be placed on the PEC agenda for February to discuss how they will remedy the uncorrected unsatisfactory performance, and the PEC may take action under the intervention ladder. Are we, I, I don't.
I need to hear the second.
I couldn't hear you Cindy, could you?
I paused for a second.
Whoever's doing the seconds on these, I'm not hearing any of the seconds, so just be sure you're using your mic. Thank you.
We didn't? Oh, no. Cindy, we're still working on the motion, so no one has seconded it yet.
I understand, I'm just reminding you to whoever seconds in the, in the rest of these.
Oh, okay, okay.
Your mic, because I'm not hearing seconds.
Okay. Continuing with the motion, and identify the unsatisfactory performance related to 4C staff credentialing on page 11. The unsatisfactory performance should be corrected by the next annual report. CSD is requested to provide a general report to PEC with regard to school improvement on growth related to ELA scores for Black students at the next PEC meeting.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, and a second by Commissioner Beck.
Commissioner Obenshane?
Yes.
Mr. Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus? Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Vice Chair Carrillo?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes. There are eight votes for, zero votes against. The motion passes.
I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to La Academia de Doras Huerta, indicating a notice of satisfactory performance.
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Burke, and a second by Commissioner Gibson.
Commissioner Ingham? Hold on, hold on. So, you know, it's interesting, on one hand, I see all of the, the greens and yellows, and I'm really happy for that. And on the other hand, I look at the academics, and it's just, it's not good at all. And so I'm conflicted. Because meeting some of these standards, well, that's great. What are the kids learning to read and write and, you know, function?
So I'm going to remind you that this is proficiency and not growth.
Yeah, I know.
So, but you don't know where they started from to get them to here, to show growth. So if they started five years behind to get them to proficiency, it's going to be challenging. That, um, you know, I think in terms of their overall score on Vista's, they improved their score from last year. And I challenge, I am challenged with holding the schools accountable to a proficiency when we have in other schools.
Well, this is one of those, this is a rare combination where the, you have a school, I think there's like, go over there again, like, three yellows and the rest greens, or, yeah. But then, on the academic stuff, they're doing really well on like, the organizational and mission program, but on the academics, not.
Look at if, and I know it's not a real growth, but if you look at their growth percentile, they're pretty close to the district.
Okay, and, but it's like, and I think growth is very important, don't get me wrong, one of your knowledge growth. But if someone, let's just, if you were looking at like math, uh, if someone grows from 10 to 13, you know what, that's great. Um, and with, if you take the 30%, if you take those three points of 10, then you could say that's 30% growth, not even just 3%. But is 13 anything to, they, is satisfactory?
This is a middle school, so you know where the school, where the students came in to, to get to that. So that's where, you know, we've heard schools come in and say, I've got a student that came in at kindergarten level, and now they're in a middle school. So how is that school going to get that, in one year, get that kid to proficiency? You're not.
I'm not going to hold this up, I totally get it. And maybe this would be one of those schools that I would want a letter sent to that said, I'm very concerned about, you know, while you're knocking out of the park in these areas, we're very concerned about these areas.
They're all green and yellow. I'm not doing it. I'm just not. Unless it shows up on our report, I am not going to extrapolate data that way.
Right, that's fine. Go on. You had a motion and a second, didn't you?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Commissioner Obenshane?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Vice Chair Carrillo?
Yes.
Chair Gibson? Secretary Beck, yes. There are eight votes for, zero votes against. The motion passes.
We're on to K. McCurdy Charter School. I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to McCurdy Charter School indicating a notice of satisfactory performance and reflect uncorrected unsatisfactory performance, mission-specific goals 1 and 2. The school shall be placed on the PEC agenda for February to discuss how they will remedy the uncorrected unsatisfactory performance and the PEC may take action under the intervention ladder.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson and a second by Commissioner Burt.
Vice Chair Corillo?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Commissioner Obenschein?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower? Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Mr. Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham? Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes, four zero votes against, the motion passes.
And to the condition on McCurdy Charter School. I move that the PEC accept the condition report from McCurdy Charter School and indicate to the school that the PEC finds that the condition is complete and no further reports are required.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, second by Commissioner Corillo.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Mr. Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Obenschein?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham? Vice Chair Corillo?
Yes.
Chair Gibson? Secretary Beck, yes, eight votes for, zero votes against, the motion passes.
Can we make it on the shorter side? Until eight, nine o'clock, at this rate?
Forty-five minutes? I want to be able to get it, I mean, it's 1:30.
I understand what time it is, but I also understand how long it takes me to go. And it's a beastly drive when I've been here for eight hours.
We can get, we can just go across and get it to go, bring it back?
Bring it back. Things, I'm the only one that's driving a distance. I appreciate it. Yeah, we're recessed until two.
Are we ready? I'm ready. Save me something. Okay.
We are on to item L, which is mission achievement and success charter school, which is kind of out of order with the annual reports.
Out of order.
Yeah. I know. Are we good with MAS? So I am going to move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to mission achievement and success charter school indicating a notice of exemplary performance and identify the unsatisfactory performance related to 3C staff credentialing on page 12 of the annual report. The unsatisfactory performance should be corrected by the next annual report. There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, a second by Commissioner Obenschein.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus? We got enough. Commissioner Manus? Mr. Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Obenschein?
Yes.
Vice Chair Corillo?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are seven votes for, zero votes against, the motion passes.
We are on to M, New America School Los Cruces. So I just want to remind, sure, about MAS.
Microphones, please.
Microphone.
Okay, so the report references 3C, which is staff credentialing, does not meet. But then in the explanation below, it has 3C, it goes attendance percentage rate is 99, 95% target, has nothing about staff credentialing, just school attendance improvement. I don't understand how that has anything to do with staff credentialing. What are we really digging them for?
Yep, oh yeah, it's recovered.
Oh, I got you, yeah, there's 3C, but. MAS has a, does not meet on staff credentialing, 3C, but in the notes on the explanation, 3C says attendance percentage, recurring enrollment.
And that should be 3B.
And attendance, so there's no explanation for the staff credentialing. Thank you. Because I just looked at the chart.
Chair Gibson, you're absolutely right.
Commissioner Ingham.
Thank you, Commissioner Ingham.
So do you want us to push?
Yeah.
To February?
Yes, please.
So I can, so we can clarify that, thank you.
So we have to rescind that vote? We voted on an AM.
Although-
Yeah, you can rescind if it's the same day and it's done by someone who's in the majority.
Yeah, it's reconsider, not rescind.
Oh, reconsider, yes, to reconsider.
Yeah, reconsider that vote and move it to-
Nice job.
Yeah, because we can reconsider within this, you can reconsider within-
For them to screw it up.
So you need to move to reconsider the vote on mission achievement and success?
I move to reconsider the vote on mission achievement and success.
Charter School.
Charter School.
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Ingham and a second by Commissioner Burt.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Corillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham? Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Mr. Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Obenschein?
Yes.
And Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes, four zero votes against, the motion passes.
Thanks for picking that up and I'll just ask the Charter School Division to have an update for February's meeting, thanks. We are back to M, New America School Los Cruces. So I'm not making excuses, but I just want to remind commissioners that this is a school that deals with students that come into them already out of graduation cohort. That they are very often, you know. They could be. I would anticipate, yes, but obviously that's up to the, up to the school, but, you know, so the students that are coming in, them are challenging students to start with. I mean, if you look at their growth percentiles, in reading, they exceed the district and the state, and in math, they're pretty close.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, that I know, yeah. Right, and that's why I mentioned the graduation, that they end up.
It's because it's red and red.
I think it's almost impossible for them to get out of CSI grad. You know, but we still have to acknowledge it. And also note that they are a school that actually is trying to, excuse me, work on their attendance through the special award project.
Staff credentialing has not, does not meet two years in a row, that we have to give them the-
Correct.
Have to call them, call them up.
And the state assessment requirements as well.
Yeah.
Two years in a row as well.
Yeah, I think they, they're challenged with getting the percentage of kids, yeah.
That one's an easy explanation for them, the staff credentialing, not so easy.
Okay, we're ready? I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to New America School Los Cruces indicating a notice of satisfactory performance and uncorrected unsatisfactory performance indicators 1B state assessment requirements and 3C staff credentialing. The school shall, the school shall be placed on the PEC agenda for February to discuss how they will remedy the uncorrected unsatisfactory performance and the PEC may take action under the intervention ladder. Given the student population of the school, the PEC is not issuing a concern regarding Vista's designation of comprehensive support CSI graduation.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson and a second by Commissioner Burt.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Obenschein?
Yes.
Vice Chair Corillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes, four zero votes against, the motion passes.
We are now on to New Mexico Academy for the Media Arts. I know. But I don't know. I'm just, you know.
So my initial, like, gut reaction, they did get an overall does not meet.
Yeah.
And so I would say it's unsatisfactory overall, and then give them that opportunity to, those reds, to improve by next year, but I do think the overall does not meet and having those reds listed is appropriate.
Yeah. No, because it's just-
Yeah, we won't be, there's no, because this is the first year of their new contract, there is no uncorrected unsatisfactory, it's their first year. So next year would be the first year that they would be called in if they don't fix their reds.
I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to New Mexico Academy for the Media Arts indicating a notice of unsatisfactory performance.
Second.
Are you? No, I haven't done the full motion. No, because there's still, and identify, yeah. And identify as unsatisfactory performance for the following, overall designation of does not meet on organizational framework. Identify the unsatisfactory performance related to 2C reporting requirements, 5B accounting principles, and 5E staffing for fiscal management on page 12 of the annual report. The unsatisfactory performance should be corrected by the next annual report. We are now on to, oh, sorry.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, second by Commissioner Burt.
Vice Chair Corillo?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Mr. Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Obenschein?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes, four zero votes against, now the motion passes.
Thanks. We are on to O, New Mexico Connections Academy, and they do have a condition. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair Gibson and commissioners, the New Mexico Connections condition document was not added to the annual report PDF, but I have uploaded it as a separate PDF into the annual reports folder.
Thanks.
And have reviewed it and it is accepted. And have, have reviewed it and it is acceptable.
Okay, thank you. Here's my- He's looking. So we're ready? Okay. I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to New Mexico Connections Academy, indicating a notice of satisfactory performance and identify the unsatisfactory performance related to Vista's designation of comprehensive support school CSI graduation. The unsatisfactory performance shall be corrected by the next annual report. No?
Second.
Oh, I thought you were remissing. Okay.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Commissioner Odenchain?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Ringham?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Corillo?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes, four zero votes against. The motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And we, so we disregard the note documentation provided because we do, they do have it and they've deemed it satisfactory. So. I move that the PEC accept the condition report from New Mexico Connections Academy and indicate to the school that the PEC finds that the condition is complete and no further reports are required.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, a second by Commissioner Burt.
Commissioner Odenchain?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Ringham?
Yes.
Vice Chair Corillo?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes, four zero votes against. The motion passes.
Thank you. We are now on.
Chair Gibson, sorry, I didn't get in quickly enough before you made the motion. When you say that the condition is complete and no further reports are required, do you mean this year or do you mean during the contract term at all? Because I thought they were supposed to report yearly.
Well, we're closing that.
Until, oh, okay, okay. So it is closed and we can, okay, thank you.
Yep, yep. We are now on to P, North Valley Academy. Sure.
I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to North Valley Academy Charter School, indicating a notice of satisfactory performance and identify the unsatisfactory performance related to 3C reporting requirements on page 10 of the annual report. The unsatisfactory performance should be corrected by the next annual report.
There's a motion by Commissioner Burt and a second by Commissioner Gibson.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Commissioner Ringham?
Yes.
Commissioner Odenchain?
Yes.
Vice Chair Corillo? Chair Gibson? Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes, four zero votes against. The motion passes.
Thank you. We are now on to Q, which is PECO's Cyber Academy, which also has a condition. Sure. I just, just looking. Yep, yep, yep.
Okay. I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to PECO Cyber Academy, indicating a notice of satisfactory performance and identify the unsatisfactory performance related to 1B, state assessment requirement on page 12 of the annual report. The unsatisfactory performance should be corrected by the next annual report.
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, Commissioner Burt and a second by Commissioner Gibson.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Corillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ringham?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Odenchain?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus? Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes, four zero votes against. The motion passes.
And we are on to the condition, which appears that everything is either completed or completed and ongoing. So, kudos. So I think at this point in time, we can, I will move that the PEC accept the condition report from PECO Cyber Academy and indicate to the school that the PEC finds that the condition is complete and no further reports are required.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Gibson, a second by Commissioner Burt.
Really quick before you call off. I just want to say really quick, I'm, I'm really, really pleased with this school and the progress that was made. I mean, this was, I, I, I was, I'll never forget being how worried I was about this condition. And I do think that the school not only took it seriously, but did go above and beyond in what our expectations were. And I'm just really grateful to the staff and the team at PECO's Connection for making these pro- like, when they see reds, they make a, they make progress. And so I, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to the school for doing exactly what our intentions are of these processes. Like, they have just made that progress beautifully and I'm really grateful for it.
It was, uh, difficult to get through that condition with the school. Because there wa-, it, yeah, I agree. I was concerned that there was not going to be a willingness to, and there's, they've embraced it and moved on and I appreciate that. Okay, so we are on.
Oh, no, 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 I got a call.
Sorry. I am just trying.
Commissioner Brower?
I am.
Yes.
Commissioner Odenchain?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus? Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Oden-
Yes.
Vice Chair Corillo?
Yes.
Chair Gibson? Secretary Beck, yes, eight votes, four zero votes against. The motion passes. I think we skipped Red River Valley in 14, possibly.
We did. In 14, it's not here.
That's the correction that we made to the agenda today. Rio Gafa was listed twice and Red River was skipped.
Okay, perfect.
Put them in there. That's how I found it.
Perfect. Move on.
Right. So we are on to, unlettered.
R, Rio Grande.
We, we switched out the Red River for Rio Gafa because Rio Gafa was listed twice.
Right. We are on to.
Rio Grande.
No, Red River. Red River is our next one. So we are on to R, Red River. Sure. Actually, Red River Valley Charter School.
I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to Red River Valley Charter School, indicating a notice of satisfactory performance and identify the unsatisfactory performance related to 2B accounting principles on page 11 of the annual report. The unsatisfactory performance should be corrected by the next annual report.
Second. Okay. Yeah. Commissioner Odenchain?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt? Commissioner Oden-
Yes.
Vice Chair Corillo? Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes, four zero votes against. The motion passes. Yeah, you gotta do Rio Grande next, I think, or whatever.
We are now on to S, which is Roots and Wings Communities.
Do Rio Grande?
Oh, Rio Grande, I'm sorry, sorry. Rio Grande, we are.
Just one sec.
Okay. Well, no, because we put Red River in there. Right?
It's out of alphabetical.
It's out of alphabetical order, but that's okay.
It should be.
That's okay. The agenda.
That's where we're on Roots and Wings.
Okay, that's, I thought that.
After the, after, after.
We'll do it next. Sure.
I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to Roots and Wings Community School, indicating a notice of satisfactory performance.
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Burt and a second by Commissioner Gibson.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Ringham?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt? Commissioner Odenchain?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus? Vice Chair Corillo?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes, four zero votes against. The motion passes.
We are on to T, Rio Grande Academy of Fine Arts. Yep.
I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to Rio Grande Academy of Fine Arts, indicating a notice of satisfactory performance and identify the unsatisfactory performance related to 5B accounting principles on page 10 of the annual report. The unsatisfactory performance should be corrected by the next annual report.
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Burt and a second by Commissioner Gibson.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Corillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ringham? Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Odenchain?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes, four zero votes against. The motion passes.
Thank you. We are now on to U, which is Six Directions Indigenous School. I know. As long as that's it.
I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to Six Directions Indigenous School, indicating a notice of unsatisfactory performance and identify the uncorrected unsatisfactory performance related to low proficiency in math, low graduation rates, 4C staff credentials. The school shall be placed on the PEC agenda for February to discuss how they will remedy the uncorrected unsatisfactory performance and the PEC may take action under the intervention ladder. The following new areas of unsatisfactory performance are identified as 2E, staffing for fiscal management, 3A governance requirements. The unsatisfactory performance should be corrected by the next annual report.
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Burt and a second by Commissioner Gibson.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Odenchain?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Commissioner Ringham? Vice Chair Corillo?
Yes.
Chair Gibson? Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes, four zero votes against. The motion passes.
Thank you. We are on to the Great Academy, which has a condition. It's not here, correct? Oh, it is. Yeah, sorry. Right. Yeah, I think so. And is, is there, has there been an assessment made of this, an analysis made of this? And it's just not here or has no one looked at it yet?
Chair Gibson, apologies. I thought that my staff had analyzed it, but I cannot find that analysis. And I do not see the comparison data from other schools, so I need to, I need to have this analyzed.
No problem. We'll just move the school to next month.
Thank you.
Yep. Did, I hear some of the question. We are on to W, Thrive Community School. Sure.
I move that the PEC provide an, oh.
Yeah, let me just refresh. I think that's, hold on, let me just look at.
So I'm, my motion would be to have it, to acknowledge an exemplary status for this school. But before I make my motion, I'm open to if anyone else would, does not think that that's appropriate and it should be satisfactory instead.
I mean, I, when I look at the explanation for the attendance.
Thrive.
I mean, they've got high retention, they've got, they're exceeding their target on, um, recurrent, I know they're just below the target for annual attendance. So I think I can easily live with exemplary. Actually, considering how young this school is, I think this is pretty remarkable. Once again, that they've got all these greens. Commissioner Beck?
Yeah, the, the, Vista scores are 47.1, is that right? Am I reading that? Do I have the right one? Okay, which is so rationalized to me why this would not, why it would be exemplary.
Oh, because it's just a traditional. I guess I was looking at its overall.
I'm looking at the.
Greens and yellows and that it meet our, our particular standard. But yeah, I wasn't necessarily looking at that they were spotlight or not. So maybe it should be that if they're a spotlight, they would get exemplary.
That's, that's where I was moving towards.
That's it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because, um, you know that Vista's is also such a flawed tool on so many levels.
Yeah, but we'd need to be consistent, I think, in how we're doing.
They also went down 10 points from the year before.
Yeah.
Commissioner Corillo, I just wanted to say, they went down from the year before, too, so.
Even though we're not supposed to compare.
No, that's why, that's why I asked, so I appreciate it and I agree with, I agree with the commission. Okay. I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to Thrive Community School, indicating a notice of satisfactory performance.
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Burt and a second by Commissioner Gibson.
Commissioner Odenchain?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Vice Chair Corillo?
Yes.
Chair Gibson? Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Ringham?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes, four zero votes against. The motion passes.
Thank you. We are now on to, is this W? Vista Grande. High School. I have to say, if I'm looking at this, they've done. Yeah.
Ooh.
I remember last year and it was, it was a, yeah, so, I understa- and once again, I think it is, it's a challenging population. So the graduation rate is, certainly we have to acknowledge it, but, so I'm, it was satisfactory.
Yeah.
I move that the PEC provide an annual report notice to Vista Grande High School, indicating a notice of satisfactory performance and uncorrected unsatisfactory performance for Vista's designation of comprehensive support school CSI graduation and low participation rate. The school shall be placed on the PEC agenda for February to discuss how they will remedy the uncorrected unsatisfactory performance and the PEC may take action under the intervention ladder. And new unsatisfactory performance related to 3C staff credentialing, the unsatisfactory performance should be corrected by the next annual report. The unsatisfactory performance should be corrected. Oh, that's a repeat of that. Second then. Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, a second by Commissioner Corillo.
Vice Chair Corillo?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ringham?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Odenchain?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes, four zero votes against. The motion passes.
Thank you. And we are on to C?
Y.
Y, Walato High School.
We gotta find one more for Z.
I know.
Um, I mean, I know, so I think when I'm looking at this school, I mean, I think what's in the motion is appropriate. That overall, they do meet the standard, but they do have some issues that I do think they should come next month and address with us. But they do overall meet the standard, and they were classified as a spotlight school in Vista's. So I think the satisfactory overall, but then I do think there are several fall, uncorrected unsatisfactory performance that I think warrant the school coming before us next month. And then, once again, listing that new, the new red that they received.
So. Spotlight measures growth more than anything, right? No?
Proficiency. The state accountability system is not a growth model. Our, our framework is, but theirs isn't. Yeah. I'm sorry.
On their, on their, whatever, the, the state assessment requirements, it says unable to rate.
Because they have, they have such a small population, so they didn't have enough students take the SATs, because that's the only thing that they're measured by in a high school is their SAT scores. So they, so that was masked, because not enough.
Masked, and, and, and they get a spotlight? I don't, designation, I don't understand that.
I can't, I can't answer.
Can, can somebody explain that to me? How you can get that spotlight designation when your state assessment is unable to rate, and you're.
That's why. So that, when, when, when there's a, anywhere, and this is for a state accountability model anywhere, any, anytime, right? So they'll, they'll have the different indicators and then their points. When a school cannot be scored on an indicator, they don't get penalized for that, it just gets removed, and so instead of it being like, you know, let's say the, the whole system's out of a hundred points, this school may actually only, you know, get, they actually only have ten points that they could even earn kind of thing. And so they're getting all the points that they have, but it's so few because they have so few students, there's, I was actually telling Commissioner Brower, it's like, they probably had six kids, you know, take the, take the assessment last year, so they cannot make accountability decisions off of six kids from the state accountability model, that's, that goes against all its rules of masking, of accountability, of all those things, so none of those things are included in their accountability model. They're also on our old performance framework. When they move to the new performance framework, I imagine they can do something different in the future, but this is what, that's, that's exactly how it works.
Deputy Director.
Yes, thank you, Chair Gibson. Exactly what, what Commissioner Burt was saying, I'm looking at the, the points feeding into Vista's, and yes, the denominator for Walatoa is very low, it is nowhere near one hundred. So most of the indicators don't even feed into Vista's, and they're not in the numerator, and they're not in the denominator.
Okay, I understand. Did any, are any kids proficient? And, I mean.
That information's masked. There are too few students for us to be able to do that.
But that's, and that's.
It should not get a rating, it should not get spotlight, certainly.
Well, they did get, that, that's, that's to their business rules and how they work, but they did get, they did, they were able to be rated in probably two or three.
Like, yeah, college and career readiness and attendance and things that, so, and I've made this point to people in, in accountability here at PED, that's like, you should just not rate this school, but that's not the way they do it. The ESA requires them to rate, and so they rate. And even if, even if proficiency numbers, because it's a high school, so the numbers are so small, and only eleventh graders are tested, if this was a K-five school that was small, the whole population of students would be enough to give them a proficiency rating. But with a teeny tiny high school with only eleventh graders being tested? Yeah.
I just feel like it degrades their whole system. When a school that has no data can be rated as spotlight, that just trashes the whole rating system. Why bother? Because a school that may not have anybody proficient, anybody, and not even that unlikely that they don't have anybody proficient in eleventh grade, and they're rated as a spotlight school, just, just blows my mind, and it makes the whole thing as farce. I'm sorry.
I hear you, I also, SAT doesn't actually show proficiency either, so it is, you know, that's what we're hooking our wagon to, so, but it doesn't show us. Commissioner Corillo.
I would agree, and I would go so far as to say that if they're measuring just the eleventh grade, there's a very likelihood that there isn't one kid, not even one, that is proficient at this particular school. Right? And.
You can't make that.
I'm just, you know what, I can say whatever I feel like. The, but the idea that, I mean, I agree with Stuart, or with Commissioner Enam completely, it's one thing, okay, we don't have any data at all, so we're gonna put you in the middle as traditional, but just, just even the word spotlight, right? There's, that means something to people that read these things and are looking for schools for their kids, and just, it just, it makes, it makes it meaningless. It makes the word spotlight meaningless, especially for those schools that really are knocking it out of the park.
Yeah. It is what it.
I move that the P E C provide an annual report notice to Walatoa High Charter School indicating a notice of satisfactory performance and identify the following uncorrected unsatisfactory performance. The falls far below criteria on school specific goal one regarding SAT scores for students attending the school for a long period of time. The falls far below criteria on school specific goal two regarding students who are new to the school. 1B state testing, state assessment requirements. 2C reporting acquire, requirements. And 5A and B financial reporting compliance accounting principles, concerns on page 11 of the annual report. The school shall be placed on the P E C agenda for February to discuss how they will remedy the uncorrected unsatisfactory performance, and the P E C may take action under the intervention ladder. The following new unsatisfactory performance should also be listed. 5E staffing for fiscal management. The uns, this unsatisfactory performance should be corrected by the next annual report.
Second.
You said 2C reporting requirements, that's for last year, right? Because this year, they're fine, they're green.
2C is green.
That is correct.
What's red, what's red is, you know, 5B's the only double, and 5E is red. Yeah.
And, um. 5B is the only.
Right.
Repeat.
We've done a lot of these.
Okay, I'd like to amend the motion. I'm gonna amend the motion. I move that the P E C provide an annual report notice to Walatoa High Charter School indicating a notice of satisfactory performance and identify the following uncorrected unsatisfactory performance. Falls far below criteria on school specific goal one. Falls far below criteria on school specific goal two. 5B compliance accounting principles, concerns on page 11. The school shall be placed on P E C agenda for February to discuss how they will remedy the uncorrected unsatisfactory performance, and the P E C may take action under the intervention ladder. The following new unsatisfactory performance should also be listed. 5E staffing for fiscal management. The unsatisf, this unsatisfactory performance should be corrected by the next annual report.
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Burt and a second by Commissioner Gibson.
Commissioner Brower.
Sorry, before we take, one, really quickly, I, I just want to say, this school did not choose to get rated the way it did by the state accountability assessment, so I do hope we don't give them backlash, like, it wasn't their choice, they didn't, they didn't want, you know, it's not that, but I do think, this is a school that I, you know, I, I think there's always been concerns about this school, and so I'm, I'm very excited to have them come up next month and talk to us about their plans for correcting these issues. That's all.
Can I make one? Because I want to retract. With, with the, looking at their, their mission specific goals, and them being at least seventy-five on two of those goals that were directly academic goals, I, I guess, I, I gotta retract that they may not have anybody, I mean, they still may not, and I still have a problem with the, the spotlight designation, but I want to retract being so upset because I, I do feel like they, they must have made some pretty good progress in their mission specific goals. Now we can.
If I'm being slow, Commissioner Enam.
Yes.
Commissioner Burt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Corillo.
Yes.
Chair Gibson.
Yes.
Commissioner Manus. Commissioner Manus.
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ovinshein.
Yes.
Commissioner Brower. Secretary Beck, yes, that passes eight, zero.
We are now on to item number fifteen, which is discussion of possible action to approve the P E C budget. We did an in-depth into the budget yesterday. I think the only. Do we want to change this here to indicate that we want to pay for the audit?
Yeah, in the motion, there is an.
Sorry, I was, I didn't open, I didn't have the motion document open, I was just looking at the budget.
While you do that, if I can make one comment real quick. I just want to reiterate again, I'm so grateful for the clarity, the transparency that you have been able to provide in this budget, especially over the last couple months, knowing like how wonky it's been, and to get to the space where it is today, I feel confident in what's here, I feel like understanding in what's here, and I am grateful, because I do know, it took a lot, like, I know this wasn't your wheelhouse of wanting to like, go into budget work, and you've done a lot of work to make sure, because I, it, the clarity you have is present through being able to teach it to us, so I am grateful for that spreadsheet, what you've been able to give to us. It's just improved significantly since we've last tried to work on it again, so I'm grateful.
It's taken.
Second.
To get here. It has, you know, so this is, you know, people that are new don't understand where we used to be. Which was a dork. So, any questions? I move that the P E C approve the budget and that the P. I move that the P E C approve the budget and that the P E C can approve an additional expense to reimburse the audit costs for state charters.
Yeah, I have a second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gibson, and a second by Commissioner Burt, or a, oh yeah.
Commissioner Ovinshein.
Yes.
Commissioner Brower.
Yes.
Commissioner Manus.
Yeah.
Commissioner Burt.
Yes.
Commissioner Enam. Chair, Chair Gibson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Corillo. Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes for, zero votes against, the motion passes.
Thanks. We are on to item number sixteen, which is discussion of possible action on notification that results in a school being out of compliance, and we talked about this yesterday, with those schools that are falling below five.
I have a question on this, and I know that we worked with Dreamtene this morning. What would be the next step? Should they, because there's been so much instability in finding someone who says, hey, I'll serve on this board, and then someone else says, oh, they're sort of, they're gonna be appointed, but then I'm dropping off. I mean, just, I'm, what is, what would be our remedy next meeting? If they're still far below, it'll be since July.
It's not what this item's about.
Right.
I don't think that's appropriate to talk, discuss right now. Sorry? No, I mean, you're discussing a specific school, and we're supposed to be discussing the form.
The action for. Right, right. Right, but for this, it's not. So I move that the P E C requires schools to have a provision in their bylaws identifying the action that would be taken if a, oh, shoot, sorry. Glad I said shoot. I move that the P E C approve the changes to the form in item sixteen that requires that notifications that result in schools being out of compliance with the contract be remedied within forty-five days, and that these note, and that these, and that notices of this type are not placed on the consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Gibson, second by Commissioner Ovinshein. Any further discussion?
Vice Chair Corillo.
Yeah.
Chair Gibson.
Yes.
Commissioner Enam.
Yes.
Commissioner Burt. Commissioner Brower. Commissioner Manus.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ovinshein.
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes for, zero votes against.
Thank you. We are now on to item number seventeen, which is the discussion of possible action on the bylaw requirements regarding low board membership. And we parsed this out fairly well yesterday, so I think we're ready. Sure.
Just, I'm wondering, and my memory may not serve just from yesterday, but did we say we were requiring, or that we were asking? Because I think we, there was a conversation about whether we require it and mandated it, or whether we say it's a good idea, and if you choose to not do it, you're, you'd run afoul of the, of the P E C. I just, I don't remember what our resolution was.
And we talked about the can we? And that's kind of a tough answer, I think, and you're right, because if we require it and a school doesn't do it, we don't really have teeth to say, shame on you. So I think we might be better served saying request. The P E C is requesting schools to have provisions in their bylaws. We are. We are requiring the new schools with their new contract. Okay.
I, I think you are requiring it, and the reason that I think that is that it's clear after a long series of things, that P E C does not have any authority to appoint board members, PED will not take that, so it falls to the school, and the appropriate place is the bylaw. So I am not sure you could place somebody on the intervention ladder and move towards revocation, but you still are requiring, you're requiring that they submit bylaws, and I think that this is a reasonable provision to put in it. I, I would suggest you say require, but can you enforce your requirement? Maybe not, but, you know, I just think that the schools that have come in front of us have, have either been in crisis or spent hundreds of dollars on attorney's fees, and it's been very unclear, and that it's happened numerous times, so I think it's a reasonable thing for this body to do.
Okay. We ready? I move that the P E C requires schools to have a. I move that the PEC requires schools to have a provision in their bylaws identifying the action that will be taken if A, board membership falls below the quorum, and B, all board members have resigned. Schools negotiating new contracts with the PEC will have these provisions in their bylaws as part of the charter contract documentation, and all other schools are required to provide bylaws showing this provision by July first, twenty twenty-five. CSD shall report on compliance with this motion at the August PEC meeting. So, okay, I just have one question. We're saying the August PEC meeting, but they don't do the assurances, so, so can we change it to September so that they can just do it with the, with that assurance? Okay.
Are you making a friendly amendment to your amendment?
Yes, I am making a friendly amendment to my amendment to change it to September PEC meeting. Commissioner Brower?
Yeah, madam, just a real quick point of clarification, since this is something that's going to be asked of schools, all schools to do, it's probably, it's not within, I know it's not within the motion, but the one thing I just think about is that it's an extra burden for schools to do, just making sure that we have very clear communication with the schools, give them ample time to, to get this done, and, and just make sure that, just make sure we're paying attention, because we know even when we're giving away, as Commissioner Carrillo says, free money, we still have two-thirds of the schools haven't gotten back to us. I'm making up a number, but maybe that's not right. But I just think about these kind of things, I know it's not necessarily our burden, but it kinda, we own it a little bit to make sure that they get it done, so that's, that's the, that's the point of clarification I just wanted to make.
I also am wondering, in bringing that up, because I do, now, like, my mindset shifted towards like the school, and I kinda mentioned this yesterday, but I still like, I don't know if we should be doing it by charter contract, because it's so fast, and like, we're, we're asking them, I still, I'm, I, we, we committed in the rule to not asking schools to do things in the middle of a school year. We told them we would not do that to them, and not only are we going to ask them in the middle of school year, but to do it within a month. I mean, like, there's some of the schools that have to do it within the next month, and that means they have to get their governing board on, on it, they need to put it on their agenda, they have to have the governing board understand it, the governing board has to get on board with it, and they have to do that this month for next month, and it just doesn't feel, it feels adverse to our values of transparency, we made a commitment to them that we wouldn't be doing this kind of stuff to them, of like throwing things at them mid-school year, so I would also suggest just having all schools do it by July one.
Yeah, we already have a motion, so, yeah, I made the motion.
This is on the special projects awards.
No, it's on the, it's on item number...
I'm just wondering if there's any adverse, like, why would, why, could we also not just ask all schools to do it by July one? Like, why, why is that contract negotiation so important if all the rest of the schools get till July one anyway?
So, so if, yeah, because, well, let me ask, so if we made...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's in the new, when we vote for the contract, which actually won't be, it's going to be like May.
That's what I'm saying. We're asking them to do it like really early on top of all the other stuff.
Yeah, I think we're better off just...
I'd rather them focus on the performance framework, on their options two, three that they're figuring out, on their mission goals, like, that's a lot for them to be preparing for right now, so to throw just another thing at them, it may seem small to us, but we're throwing another thing at them with a very quick turnaround, is my concern. It is a fast turnaround.
I have a check-in with them at contract negotiations.
I agree with that.
Are you, what are, you know...
See that we want to talk to you?
You're, you're on your way, because I think, because we also talked about the possibility of an entity like PCS and AM creating the templates, thank you, and I don't know if that would be done by next month. I think, yeah, it makes sense, so, there's a friendly amendment, number two, which changes the date to all schools are required, so, all schools are required to provide bylaws showing this provision by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. CSD shall report on compliance with this motion at the September PEC meeting.
Why September and not August?
Because they do their assurance document isn't due until September, and that's when they would assure that they've got their bylaws and yet, so it just makes sense that the report comes when all the assurance...
And wouldn't this be like an epicenter thing too, where they're checking up...
They are, yeah, they are. Good? Okay.
That was already second, it was already seconded as well, yeah. I appreciate it, thanks for... Thank you, Commissioner Brower, for bringing it up first, to me also, thank you.
You get a gold star.
Yep.
You don't know how to evaluate spotlight. Commissioner, excuse me, excuse me, yes, Commissioner Brower.
Yes.
Mr. Menus.
Yeah.
Mr. Burt.
Yes.
Mr. Ringham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Carrillo.
Yes.
Chair Gibson.
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes, four zero votes against, motion passed.
Okay, item number eighteen, we actually don't need to take any action on the special projects awards. We discussed it yesterday, so there is no further action that needs to be taken. Item number nineteen, report from the charter schools division, update on CSD staff positions.
Is it listed twice in the agenda? All right.
Because there's only a hundred eyes on this at any one time, and, because you keep looking at wrong things and thinking they're right. Yeah, it's all right.
Okay. So commissioners, we received nine notices of intent, they're uploaded to...
Nine?
We did receive nine. One was inappropriately sent, and so there's actually eight that are eligible for consideration. The ninth one did not notify the district, and that is a provision in statute that they notify both the PEC and the district. So you will be open to eight charter applications July, June one. Of course, the schools can decide whether they'll submit with you or the local district, but this document is just a summary of who submitted the notices of intent. The blue link takes you to your webpage where the eight notices are listed. We have, we have three in Albuquerque, one in Las Cruces, one in Santa Fe, one in Espanola, Clovis, and Mora. So the one in Santa Fe and Espanola was submitted by the same person, so I think this person is probably, my guess is, going to decide if she wants to pick Santa Fe or Espanola. But this chart is just a real quick summary again of the name of the school, the location, the founder, grade served, the cap, and we did verify already that the district was informed and, yeah, only one of, only one has indicated a potential head administrator, and you'll see if they listed any of the additional partners in their project, we added them here.
So I'm going to ask about technical review of them, because I believe it's, three of them indicate in the NOI that they are going to operate pre-K through five or eight, and we can authorize a pre-K program.
Absolutely.
It'll be...
Right.
That guidance will be offered them, that the application can include the pre-K.
So Chair Gibson, in accordance with last year's process, you asked us to provide feedback.
Right.
So Ms. Brown, Head and I are going to sit down with all the notices of intent and provide really specific notations for what we will let the schools know, it's probably going to be sometime after next week, but we'll give that feedback that if they want to have a pre-K program, that's possible, and there's a lot of effort right now to encourage regular public schools and charter schools to have pre-K programs, but there's complexities when it's a charter school, and that's not the purview of the authorized, the authorized school, right? That's not something that you all approve.
Correct, and I, so, just from my simple perspective of it, I think it's unlikely that they would get a grant when they're not a school yet.
Probably not immediately, but we, we do have a number.
The playground requirements for those pre-K programs are really, and I, I get it, you know, and there's all sorts of classroom requirements, because they, you know, everything else, they'd be even lower, so it's, but those grants go to schools and they're not a school yet, so that's just my simple answer to them.
Thank you, Chair Gibson. Any other questions around this?
So you don't have any staff updates?
No staff update.
Okay, thank you. We are on to item number nineteen, which is me, I actually reported out yesterday on that, I just wanted to mention, I think we all received the thank you, but I did send that, obviously, I sent that award out to former Commissioner Armio, I did send an ask-out, so I'd appreciate for those of you that haven't offered the ten dollars that we have... Huh? Oh, Zelle? You don't do Zelle? Oh, no, you don't do Zelle. I, yeah, I do still take cash. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Oh, wait, you need, you need change. So...
That's your gift.
So, just, it was a lovely award, so thank you, and I passed on to, and it was really inexpensive considering what it looks like. It was, it was pretty. I, I was just disappointed it didn't come in before the last meeting so I could bring it in person and show everyone, because I was surprised when I saw it, you know? Hmm? How big? Probably about that high. I got a medium.
He's in Ukraine. He's supporting the arts in Ukraine.
I bought it off of Etsy, and I usually put the filter only ship in the United States, and I just wasn't paying attention, and then I realized this guy's in the Ukraine. But honest to goodness, I got it so fast, I got it faster than if my neighbor had mailed me something, you know, so it's like, hey, this is, it was really, I'll, I'll show you a picture of it, but it was really, it's on a piece of burled wood, and it's, I picked blue acrylic, and he'll do anything for you. You get a lot of letters in the, for the price, you know, so it, it's very nice, so thank everyone for that. I, so I told you New Mexico Academy for the Media Arts, and I think that's all I have at this point in time. So, gee, the rest of the audience has all left.
It's typical.
Yeah.
Last but not least. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, commissioners, and congratulations to the new officers that will be seen next month, so it's going to be an interesting February with all the schools coming up and all the discussion going on with, looking forward to that, so, anyway, I was gonna, I had like a thirty-minute presentation planned, and I'm going to go through this very quickly. First of all, the, we have Charter Day at the Capitol, and that's going to be on February tenth that everybody is invited to, we will have a reception just right over here, what is the name of the little restaurant? But there's going to be, I'll, and I'll send you out the information on the reception, but we are going to have a reception afterwards also that everybody will be invited to, and that is February tenth, so put that on your calendar, February tenth, that is PCS and M's Charter Day at the Capitol.
Oh, great.
And I went through the legislative platform before, so I'm just going to briefly go through it. Our PCS and M's legislative platform is funding equity, local authorized schools as their own boards of finance, that's a big deal for charter schools still, additional funding for the charter school revolving loan fund, we would like at least, well, we're hoping for an extra thirty million, right now it's ten million, so go up to forty million dollars, authorize their independence, serving overaged, undercredited students past the age of twenty-two, and we support the funds that student support staff for general student population, not just special ed population, so it's support the funds that student support staff for all students instead of just the special ed students right now. And then the last one, which is really shooting for the moon, is fully fund insurance costs. So we know that that's a big ask to fully fund that, but when we look at the state of New Mexico, it really sounds like teachers are getting paid a lot of money, but then when you add in that insurance cost of how much that is, that's like ten percent of their check right there, just gone to, to insurance, so that's a big, a big deal. The CSP grant is, is going good, round two awards will be announced by the end of January, so coming up very soon that we'll have the awards. Also, we have two school choice fairs, one is in Albuquerque on January twenty-fifth at the Embassy Suites, again, that's here, here in Albuquerque, it's in Albuquerque, January twenty-fifth at Embassy Suites, and the other one will be in Las Cruces on February first, and do you know where, is that going to be downtown again?
No, it's going to be at the Convention Center.
Okay, okay.
We don't have to contend with wins and everything else.
All right, very good, so February first, if you can make the Las Cruces one, so I, I'll just stand for questions, if you guys have any questions for me?
So I just wanted to just expand a little bit on that, so it is a full school choice fair, it's not just a charter fair, so it does include, they've invited LCPS if they want to come, they've invited private schools in the area if they want to participate because it is choice, so I, you know...
You also invite the innovation schools in Albuquerque, the, their schools of choice.
Magnet schools.
Their schools of choice that have their own...
Yes, and I know last year charter schools weren't invited to APSs.
Right, and they weren't this year either.
Yeah, so, but charter schools are trying to invite everybody that, and, and get the word out that we are a choice, but we are also free public education, so, yes, that is something they're, they're really trying to do. I'll look up the location on February tenth, when we have our Capitol Day here, I'll look up the location here in just a minute, and I'll find out where the reception is going to be, I know it's just right across the street here, but I just can't remember the name of the, the hotel that it is, it is.
End of the governors?
Yeah, there you go, end of the governors, it's going to be the end of the governors, so, thank you.
Good luck with parking there.
Well, everyone will be parked already, probably, we get here...
Yeah, that's true, because it is tight there. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Any questions? Okay, thanks, appreciate it, Wayne. Appreciate you hanging in with us, too, you know, I closed everything up. So we are on to twenty? Oh, okay, and I gave everyone the update on the, on where we are in terms of legislation, we'll continue to keep people updated when the final draft is, is ready, it should be within a couple of days, hopefully, and we'll send out.
I just wanted to go, point my little pet peeve, we filed Senate bill to prohibit cell phones in the classrooms, so, about that.
Okay, we are on to item number twenty-one. Oh, sorry, sorry.
You know what's interesting about that? Think of how many, when students come to speak to us, they don't write things out on paper anymore, they write things out and they have them in their cellphone. I mean...
I mean, the thing is, it's a cellphone abuse. I understand your concern totally as a teacher, but I also know teachers at Santa Fe High School that, you know, the assignments are there. They almost use it like it's an iPad, you know? So, it's just, it's really more, you know, we'll see where that goes. But, it's just, just remember all the kids that are here, that's where they read all their comments from. They don't write them down anymore.
I, my notes app is, you know, because I put notes in my Apple.
It'll be interesting what happens.
So, thanks. I get it. But, also, in a lot of schools, they're provided a tablet that they can use. So, that's, okay. So, we are now on to item number 21, discussion of possible action to provide input to the Chair or liaisons to speak on behalf of the PEC.
I'm thinking at this time, we probably need to do something to allow, so the session starts Tuesday.
Oh, you're right, yeah, it should.
So, we probably do need to allow for the Chair to speak or a liaison, right? Because I also, I would assume if I, if I'm not there, I'm calling y'all, just so you know. So, I do think we need to create something right now that's a clear guidance of what the Chair can speak on on behalf, or what whoever's does, whoever's representing the PEC, exactly what they can represent the entire PEC on versus us as individuals. So, I do think this is an appropriate time to come up with that transportation, right? The things the Legislative Committee have been working on, I think we kind of need to list them out to provide clarity. Because I can tell you right now, there's not a single thing I'm going over there and saying, "The PEC wants this," unless we'd vote on this today.
So, we have the uncoupling. Yes. Authorizer independence.
Anything to do with that.
Correct. Because, yeah, because it's going to show up in a variety of areas.
Anything to do with the State Board of Education, and if it's impacting the PEC, its impact on the PEC. Transportation related to charter schools.
Well, also, I mean, because we're piggybacking with NMSBA in terms of transportation being fully funded, so districts don't have to tap into their operational either.
Would it be appropriate to say transportation specifically NMSBA's platform, supporting NMSBS platform?
Charter, right. So, as long as it's covering all public schools and fully funding, then we're in there.
We can support them.
Because our schools are in there.
Okay.
And I would say also, funding first-year charters if it's, we have that as a separate.
Wayne, can you also help with like what other things you want us to be able to speak on on behalf of the PEC?
Well, Wayne's...
Because we could come up and do it individually anytime, you know? Like, you can come up and say, "I'm a PEC Commissioner, I'm speaking for myself, but I do want to have the, on behalf of the entire Commission," kind of list it out as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Beck, Bert, sorry. What I just mentioned, I think that that is something that we kind of overlap already on, and I'm not, yes.
We're probably not going to get involved in the LEAs.
Right.
Right?
But transportation is one of the big, yes.
And then was there anything else that was?
The age.
That's right.
The 22, yes.
Yes.
Right.
And the NMSBA funding.
Yes.
And then, okay, thank you. In addition, anything to do with 2% funding and transparency, is that on your guys' list this year, like last year?
I don't know if that's going to be, yeah.
Haven't heard anything. So, do you want, as a Commission, if anything were to come up, I think...
If we're not bringing, if they're not bringing it, I'd rather just not come up because then it dilutes the whole thing.
I'm saying just authorize that if something were to come up between this month and next month, that we could speak on behalf of the Commission for what we believe with the 2%, that it should go directly to the PEC and charter.
So, we don't have our own lobbyist. Who, I think we should have someone, and maybe it's Consuela, since she's our liaison, that's just a legislative, hold on, legislative tracker. Because things, I mean, unfortunate, I live 10 minutes away. So, something that was going to be at 9 o'clock, oh my God, now it's at 3 o'clock. Well, I can then change my schedule and be here at 3 if I need to be. Or legislation that wasn't going to appear, hey, you know what, it's going to be at 8 o'clock tomorrow morning. Hello? So, somebody who's keeping track of where things, our specific bills are, so that we can speak to them. I mean...
So, there's, so you sign up for Legiscan alerts. Legi, L-E-G-I-S-C-A-N alerts. And that shows you, and you can put in keywords, and you put in keywords like charter, whatever it is. And of course, if you just put in charter, you're going to get a ton of bills because it'll say, "Schools and all charters." But, you can, you can read, and it's like, oh, I don't have to really pay attention to that. And they will, they will alert you when any bill is filed that, that deals with charter schools. Then you can look at, you can click on it, you'll see who, and then you can say, "I want an alert when it's been assigned." But, then you do have to, you have to go on the legislative website, and you have to look at the committee agendas. The night before.
Yeah.
And from someone who drove up at 3 o'clock in the morning and then got there, and between the time of my driving and getting there, it's pulled off often because someone got pulled away to another committee. There is nothing you can do about that. It changes all the time, and for, they have no control over when, oh, someone else's bill is being heard. So, now they can't report to this committee, and it's delayed. So, it just gets to be too bad, so sad. But, if you, you do have to, you have to know, Legiscan alerts will tell you what committee it's been assigned to. And then you have to on your own track the committees and look at the agendas that they usually post by the late afternoon of the day before. And, you know, Legiscan. Correct. I, oh, I don't know. It's, it's a, no, because it's a national program. It's a national thing. So, you have to, you have to go on it, the website, and then tell me from New Mexico, and then you'll get the alert to New Mexico. But, this, that entity does it for legislatures across the country. I guess dot com. It's not a dot gov, let me... When you go on it, you can set up your own settings, and it's helpful, you know? Because it also has the analysis on it as it starts to go through committees, impact and things like that. But, it's, it's not helpful, it'll tell you what committees it's been assigned to. But, then you've got to get into our legislature to see the committees that it's been assigned to. And then look at the schedule. It's, it's a village, you know, once this starts.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I also want to thank you guys for voting in your budget to pay the tuition for, the $10,000, first of all, but then also now for the audits. That is such a big deal, and you've just made a lot of people very happy by putting that in your budget. So, that will start in July, correct? Is that the July?
No, our anticipation is we'll pay for the audits that took place this year.
Wow, okay. I just need to make sure I'm clear on that, so thank you. That's even better news.
Remind them how great we are.
Yes, I will, I'll tell them how great. I'll say it was all Stephen Caddiel's idea here, so...
Tell them we can't take cash, but we can take in-kind.
Yes. So, then on the, when I said funding equity, that did include the transportation funding at-risk that follows the school and the size adjustment. The size adjustment, I know it, it is something that legislators don't want to hear. But, schools are dying because of that, and I don't know what we're going to do in the future because they're just not getting funded enough.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks so much, appreciate it.
Did you? Because I was just going to clarify the list. No, I don't, no, no, I don't.
Yeah.
Okay, I have...
Shut everything down.
Well, I don't, I don't have clarification. Authorizer independence, anything regarding the State Board of Education that impacts the PEC, transportation related to charters, and the New Mexico School Board's legislation to fully fund transportation, funding first-year charter transportation, funding for students over 22. And then, I'm not clear what the others were, maybe the size adjustment, at-risk funding, and then at...
The NMSBA.
I, NMSBA facilities. Yeah.
Sorry, what about the age? Was that part, is that part of the at-risk? Or was that...
For students over 22.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was that listed already?
On my list.
Yeah.
Sorry. So, right now, that's actually in the agenda, your item 21 is where I typed it, the agenda. The agenda in the meeting materials at the front, and go down to 21.
Okay. Should we also put in there just, if there's anything that comes up about the 2%?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We want to know about it.
That's going to definitely impact, like, even if it's just like a...
If we're not generating it or they're not generating it, but just in case, you know? Just in case they decide to take it away.
Right.
I know, I know.
All right.
I don't know of any moratorium bills that are coming up, do you?
I, I would be, I would be shocked if there was anything like that. I really would.
Motion? Okay. I move that the Chair or an appointed liaison speak on behalf of the PEC this legislative session regarding authorizer independence, State Board of Education impacting the PEC, transportation related to charters, NMSBA's legislation to fully fund it, funding first-year charter transportation, funding for students over 22, small school size adjustment, the at-risk funding, NMSBA facilities funding, or any legislation related to 2% funding.
Second, there's a motion by Commissioner Bert, a second by Commissioner Gibson. My, so here's my only question with it. So, is it going to be the Chair that's going to call and say, right, okay? Okay.
Or it would seem like if one of us wants to do a certain thing, we can call the Chair and say, "Hey, I'd like to speak on this."
Yeah.
Just let the Chair know.
Yeah.
Kind of like the 25th Amendment. No idea. Get that. Hey.
I did, I did hear it late, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Obenschein?
Yes.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Manus? Mr. Bert?
Yes.
Commissioner Ulam? Vice Chair Carrillo?
Yes.
Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Secretary Beck, yes, there are eight votes, eight votes for, zero votes against. Motion passes.
Thank you.
I, I did hear recently that many legislators are paying attention to in-person comment and not much to virtual.
Yeah. I mean, I will say, House Ed does a really good job and does always recognize and listen to virtual. They're great about it. That's about it, you know? But, House Ed is really, has always been excellent with recognizing and allowing you to speak, and it's been really very easy, and that's about the only one I've had successful. So, okay, thank you. PEC comments?
One quick one. Great to have Mr. Obenschein here. Welcome. Hope your first day was everything you expected it to be.
Well, he didn't run out of the building after last night.
Well, I was, I was going to say, one of the things that I forgot to mention when I introduced myself today was the real reason that I ran for PEC was so I could say "Eko La" at a public meeting.
So, I just want to say, welcome once again. Consuela does the coffee and the paper plates and things like that. So, when she's back next month, if folks, she's, several Commissioners gave her money last month, but she's, so she's probably okay for next month. I brought cups in because she's sick, and she said, "I, we don't have cups." So, I brought them in, but she's, she'll probably need to be replenished. So, I just want to remind folks of that, otherwise, I am good. So, item number, oh, I'm sorry, I'm just assuming no one else. We're moving on. Okay. Item number 22, discussion of new business topics for the next agenda.
Yes, and that is what we discussed.
We didn't, not all of us...
I know, which is totally fine. So, the item for the next agenda is revisiting, actually rescinding the decision that we made on the logo and reconsidering it. And all you got to do is go to the NOIs, look at the logo and how it actually appears on a sheet of paper. And, but, you know what, there's, I know that there's, he's on to. When I, when I, you know, I think that it went through at the end, the last meeting more than anything because it was the end of a long day, not because anybody actually likes. It didn't seem like anybody actually liked this logo. It was just the lesser of evils, and it was the end of a long day. It doesn't represent who we are, and I was kidding with Mike Taylor, that it represents more the Library Commission than us. But, anyway, so revisiting that decision, rescinding it, and possibly redoing it so something that actually represents who we are and what we do. And I know that there's another Commissioner on who...
Need a second to do it.
Commissioner Manus, second. Commissioner Manus, second.
Thank you, they heard you.
Okay, anyone else? All right. We are...
Do I have to do a room call?
Oh, we have to, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
What's the matter? Oh, we, no, I don't...
No, no, we don't have to vote on it.
We don't vote on that.
No, you don't, no.
The rules are, we just need someone to a second to get it on. I know, I know.
You got it. Commissioner Bert? For the last time, Chair Gibson, Vice Chair Carrillo?
Yes.
For the last time, Secretary Beck, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. Commissioner Ulam? Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Manus up there?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Uh, new exploit Commissioner Obenschein?
Yes.
And we are adjourned.